Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order and thank you for joining us on a very celebratory day. Today, our invocation will be given by Father Pete Elizardo from Corpus Christi Cathedral. Father Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. I share the words of our late Holy Father Benedict XVI, who reminded us that each of us is the result of a thought of God. Each of us is willed, each of us is loved, and each of us is necessary. Lord, we thank you for this day that we begin giving you thanks and praise for the goodness you have shown to us and the great joy in our heart as we come together to ask your blessing upon our mayor and council as they begin this new time together welcoming those who joined them for the first time and thanking you for those who have returned and continue the great effort in serving our city. We ask for your blessing upon their efforts that they begin today as a team. We ask for your blessing that they always remember how necessary each of them truly is to all of us. We ask for your grace that they love what they have been called to do. And we ask that you always fill them with the zeal to bring to fulfillment what is your will in them for all of us who call Corpus Christi home. We thank you for their families who share their time generously. We thank you for all of the families that are represented here today and those who call Corpus Christi home. We thank you for all of our businesses who believe in Corpus Christi and desire to establish themselves here to benefit each other and all who visit Corpus Christi, to enjoy pastimes and family time together. Father, we thank you for your daughter, our mayor. We thank you for your daughter and your sons who serve on this council. Bless them with the unity that always brings about a good and bless them with discerning moments where they each and everyone shares their thoughts, shares their desire, and realize what can come from them working together that will always benefit the many. May they always allow the Holy Spirit to guide all they do, for the Holy Spirit calls us to never be self-serving, but always to be self-giving. May this gift be what we, the citizens of Corpus Christi, receive from our mayor and our council and all those who work for the city of Corpus Christi, our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, our rescue workers, and all those who are employed in this building and beyond. Thank you for the wonderful blessed team they are. We give you thanks for this day and we ask for your blessing upon what begins today and continues tomorrow and for years to come, which is always what blesses us as a city and most especially as a community. And we thank you for this day once again, and we ask that you always watch over our mayor and council and city under the guardianship of your holy angels. All this we ask through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father. In our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag, we'll be led by Kiranen Kruger. Kiranen is a senior at WB Ray High School. He has been accepted recently to Georgetown University. He is the founder of Corpus Christi Little Pantry, and I am so proud of Kiranen, who is the son of one of my best friends.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now next, please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Kiranen, and good luck. Ms. Whitaker, would you please call roll?
Mayor Paulette Juárdo.
Present.
Council members Roland Barretta.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Present.
Gil Hernández.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pestley.
Here.
Everett Roy.
Here.
Dan Suckley.
Present.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and council acquorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Whitaker. We'll move on to Section E, City Manager's Comments Update on City Operations. Mr. Zanoni?
Great, thank you, Mayor, and welcome, Mayor, and members of the council. We have three things to cover this morning in the City Managers' Report. The first is a kind of a recap and a progress report on the Flint Hills oil spill that happened on Christmas Eve. And so I do have some comments, and then we're going to show you some maps as well that show you the area of impact. So the cleanup efforts are ongoing from the oil spill that happened on Christmas Eve near the Flint Hills Ingleside facility in the La Quinta Channel. It's important to note that the area of the spill is in the city's limits, the city of Corpus Christi, even though the dock comes off from the territory of Ingleside. In fact, the dock is contested right now in the court system as to who, what city owns it, is it the city of Ingleside or the city of Corpus Christi? But nonetheless, the oil spill impact definitely was in the city limits, the city of Corpus Christi. So in some background, on December 24th, which we know is Christmas Eve, a cracked pipeline belonging to Flint Hills Resources caused 335 barrels of light crude oil to spill into the La Quinta Channel. And that number, 335 barrels, is, has been developed using instrumentation of Flint Hills. They can generally tell based on the amount of oil that would travel along the pipeline and another instrumentation that it's 335 barrels. So it wasn't guessed based on what was in the water, but rather what traveled through the pipe using their instruments. So as a result, light crude oil did impact the following areas: Dock #5 at Flint Hills Resource, which is in Ingleside; the dredge, what's known as dredge or drudge material placement area, #10, I'll show you this on a map momentarily; the ship channel, these are all points where the oil impacted. So the ship channel, Indian Point, Nuasis Bay, small island known as the Rokery Island. There were some impacts on North Beach. I think a few days after Christmas, we were notified that there was some impact at our marina, the Corpus Christi Marina. And then finally, all the way down to University Beach, which is a small beach right across from T M U C C down there on Ocean Drive. So what we're going to do right now is take you through a series of maps. I'm not sure if these have been shown before, but this first map just orients us to the bay of Corpus Christi, obviously, which is right here where I just circled. This is the ship channel where ships come in and then through this narrow pass right here where I just stopped on that green line. We're going to go to the next slide. Yeah, okay, so that was that narrow pass I talked about. This red circled dock here is where the oil spilled off from and then into the bay. So that area was impacted across from there, this dredge area, placement area known as #10. You can see the red lines here, and you'll see them as I go through this presentation. That's where boom, boom material was set up to hold the oil so that it could be picked up, absorbed through absorbent pads, or skimmed up through professional skimming boat devices. So those were two areas on that narrow pass of the ship channel where the ships come through. In fact, the port of Corpus Christi was closed on Christmas Day because of the, trying to get, the people trying to get facts together as to the cleanup and the impact. And so there were some, over 20 vessels that were waiting to come through the ship channel because of the spill and the sensitivity of it. The port of Corpus Christi was in fact closed on Christmas Day. This next slide will show us some more areas of impact. And so this is Portland area over here, let's start over here. You can see the red, these are the booms that were set up to contain the oil. And that booming system is meant to hold the oil that's now separated from the water so it doesn't travel any further than the area. You can see here is another area. This is that Rokery Island, the bird Rokery, that was impacted. This right here, where the new green is, is North Beach. So we know there were areas of impact on North Beach. There were booms set up there as well as down here by the Lexington and the Texas State Aquarium. And then further back here in the Delta area, or the Back Bay as they call it, I should say, not the Delta area, but the Back Bay, there was some impact back there as well, and booms were set up to contain the oil. Of all the areas, all the boom material has been removed with the exception of back here, and so I'll talk about that as we go through. And then there's one more presentation slide here. This is further down Ocean Drive now by Texas A&amp;M University. This is the island as we refer to it as, where these passes are here. There was oil made it that far down there, but booms were set up and skimmers as well to collect that oil there. So that takes us through the layout. I asked for that myself on Christmas Day, and once I saw it, it helped to make sense as to exactly what was going on and where was the, where was the oil and where was it traveling? So on December 25th, a multi-jurisdictional unified command team, and that's important, it wasn't Flint Hills, it wasn't an entity, it was a command team made up of or led by Flint Hills, and that's the national norm. The person that, or the entity who's leaked the oil has to take the lead role in cleaning it up. In some cases, the federal government can federalize the cleanup if it's pretty significant, but in this case, it was seen as a not so significant. It is significant, but it's not significant in scale to other leaks. So there was no federalization, but Flint Hills was a lead in the team. And the unified command team was set up with the following agencies, so Flint Hills Resources, the Coast Guard Sector of Corpus Christi, the US Coast Guard, the Texas General Land Office, TGLO, the Texas Parks and Wildlife, and then the City of Corpus Christi Emergency Management Operation, Billy Delgado, who's here with us this morning. So the Texas of all these agencies, the one that has the superior oversight is the Texas General Land Office, the TGLO, and that's because the oil leaked off of land, or in this case, it was actually a dock attached to the land. And so some have asked, why isn't the, why isn't the TCEQ involved? And because TCEQ, Texas Environmental Quality, they get involved if the oil spill originates in the water. But in this case, it originated basically on land or on the dock, and so therefore, the General Land Office, TGLO, is the lead agency from a oversight standpoint. But they worked in the Unified Command Center, this is called an Incident Command Structure, and it's a standardized model that's used across the country where there's norms that these agencies have to follow, this protocol, very strict protocol, very strict time limits, well-documented protocols on what to follow. This standardized model was put in place after 9/11, so it's used for emergencies like this. Meetings were held at the Incident Command Post multiple times a day with these agencies, so Flint Hills, the Coast Guard, TGLO, Texas Parks and Wildlife, and our EOC, City of Corpus Christi. So since the incident, Flint Hills has deployed more than 3,000 absorbent pads and 60,000 feet of boom for the cleanup efforts. We know, or if we don't, it's good to point out, that oil doesn't mix with water, separates from water. So the cleanup is a process to do, and it's doable. The oil can do a couple of things. One, it can evaporate, which it did. Some of it evaporates into the air once it's exposed to the air or the atmosphere. So some evaporated into the air, others, because it's a light crude, gelled up in the water because of the water temperature, and that's why we were showing pictures of, it looks like wax, and that's what people were seeing on North Beach, and that's how it was cleaned up. So in the water, if it's in a liquid format, the skimmers are used. But with the cold water temperatures, remember that 25th, December 25th was cold, I think we were down in the twenties. To some extent, that's fortunate because it caused the oil to gel up. And once it gets in that state, unless it's extremely hot, it doesn't go back to a liquid format. So the cleanup was a little easier maybe than if it happened in the summer when it's extremely hot. So 60,000 feet of boom were used, 3,000 absorbent pads. Air monitoring stations is part of the protocol, those were set up because of that evaporative nature of oil. The air monitoring stations look for toxins in the air, and if there were problems, we would have moved people away from that air mass, but no air monitoring alerts were needed. The Texas Parks and Wildlife, as I mentioned, was part of the Incident Command. They did report the death of 13 birds from the oil spill, 13 birds. And then one turtle was treated for potential exposure and then released. So impact, but nothing too, too significant to the wildlife in the area. So that takes us to about January 3rd, and by January 3rd, which was a few days after that Christmas break, less and less oil material was being observed in those impacted areas that I showed you on the maps. By Friday, January 6th, this is last Friday, Flint Hills did receive approval from the Coast Guard and the TGLO to remove the remaining booms from the Corpus Christi and Nuasis Bay. So that is important. So the oil operator doesn't just do whatever they want to do, they have, as I mentioned, they have to follow some pretty strict protocols, and they can't just say, okay, I think everything's cleaned up, we're going to call it a day. They have to get the permission from the agencies in charge, in this case, the GLO and the Coast Guard. They have to tell Flint Hills everything's cleaned up. So they're still doing that, there's still a few booms, as I showed you, in that Back Bay area, but they did get notice from these agencies to begin to remove the booms from the Corpus Christi and Nuasis Bay. As I mentioned, the spill was not federalized, meaning Flint Hills managed the cleanup process and that command structure. They did this within the confines of state and federal guidelines, and there are reportable criteria that must be met and protocols that have to be followed, and those were indeed followed and met. So as I just mentioned, Flint Hills cannot close out the event independently, they need concurrence from these agencies, and that is coming more and more so. We expect that by this, they actually think by tomorrow, but was, benefit of the doubt was saying, probably by the end of the week, by Friday, this incident should pretty much be closed up, meaning all the oil that is out there in the paraffin format has been cleaned up or absorbed up or has evaporated. So from a city perspective, last week, I did arrange a meeting with Flint Hills, and I want to thank two of the individuals that are here with us this afternoon, Andy and Tom from Flint Hills, some of the leadership I met with last week, and they offered to come into the council meeting. I told them I'd be giving an update, and they're here, and I want to thank them for being here. But I did arrange a meeting with them and our team to include Billy Delgado, myself, our communications team, and a few other staff members. In the four years I've been here, we've gone through a lot of unprecedented things, like a worldwide pandemic, two extreme freezes, hurricanes, but we've never gone through an oil spill, I haven't in four years. So this is a good learning lesson for us, I think, relatively speaking, when you compare it to other oil spills, it's small, I'm not discounting it, say it's nothing to worry about. Comparatively speaking, it's a small spill, but it was a good alert for the city team. We learned some things from this that will carry forward, hopefully we don't have to repeat it. But if another oil spill does happen, I think this city organization is more prepared because we've gone through it now, we better understand it, to communicate with the community. I know I was communicating with council Christmas morning while folks were opening gifts, but we admittedly want to do a better job next time, if there is a next time, communicating with the community, because this is, this was in the city limits, much to some spin that was placed on it initially where I was told that it's really in, really in Ingleside, you don't have to worry about it. Well, no, it's in the, it's in the city limits in the Bay of Corpus Christi. So we have a better organized team now and our own internal protocol are put in place should this happen again. So just some final closing comments is that as a result of the spill, as I mentioned, there were no air situations, we didn't have to move anybody for some air containment or air contamination. None of our beaches were ever closed. It just shows you, you know, relatively speaking, it was significant, but not as significant as it could have been. So none of our beaches were closed. There was never any fishing bans, there were no fishing bans anywhere in the bay, and there were no swimming bans as well. So that just helps to demonstrate and put it in relative context of the spill. So communications continue this week with Flint Hills and the city liaison and that command structure, as I mentioned. We have been, since the city returned back from the Christmas break, we've been doing daily media releases. In some cases, the update is minor, but nonetheless, we've been doing a daily media release to help the community understand the status of what's going on. We've been doing some social media posts as well in case people don't follow the media outlets here. So Mayor, that concludes, and council, kind of the summary of the oil spill with some pictorial maps. I'm here if there's any questions. Billy Delgado was here, and I represented those from Flint Hills are as well. And I want to thank them because they, one of the things they did say in our meeting last week is that an incident like this is not part of the business model. In other words, it's not a good thing, and they, and they're not happy with it. And so they took it very seriously, they worked Christmas evening, Christmas Day, and they've worked to diligently get it cleaned up, they know the severity Day, and they've worked to diligently get it cleaned up, they know the severity of it and their business model. They've been transparent and have communicated to the command structure, they're a big employer of the city, they've been here for many years, and so they know the sense, they know the sensitivity of it, the urgency of it, they're not happy with it, and I want to thank them for the leadership that they, that they showed in this event. So Mayor, that concludes that portion of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Klein, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, Peter, I don't think I heard you mention this, maybe I missed it. I believe I saw in the media that there's an investigation into the cause of the leak. Do we know what the status of that investigation is?
Right, yeah. Thank you, Councilman. Right, yes, sir, sorry to interrupt you, thank you. That was in my, my notes here, and I failed to mention it. So, the cause of the investigation is underway, we generally know what happened, it came from a pipe that was on the dock, they refer to it as Dock Number Five, but a more thorough investigation is underway to see exactly what failed, what failed in the, in their system for that to happen.
Do we have a timeline on when that investigation?
Billy, do we have a timeline? No timeline yet, but we're monitoring it, so we should get that, and once we do get it, I'll try to get, once we do find out what is the timeline, we'll notify the community of that. And then secondly, when the, when the details of what happened are available, we'll make sure that this council and the community is aware.
And that investigation is being conducted by Flint Hills or by GLO?
Flint Hills, Flint Hills exclusively. Yeah, come on up, this is Andy with Flint Hills, one of their local representatives that we work with, in their Communications and Public Affairs Department. Andy, thank you, yes, sir, if you can explain that.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Obviously, we regret that this situation happened, I think nobody ever wished that this would possibly happen in our city limits, but it happened and we responded. My name again is Andy Science, for the record, Public Affairs Director for Flint Hills Resources, also with me this morning, Tom Baldassar, who's the head of operations for the southern area of our Pipelines and Terminals Division. As we have said, no spill is acceptable, I mean, not one drop. It's not up to our company standard, we, we train for this in case it happens, but you really hope you never have to use that training. But it happened, and we have responded appropriately with all the correct agencies. First, let me thank all of the emergency responders who were with us, starting on Christmas Eve, remember how cold it was that night, and we had personnel in boats pulling product, laying down booms, it was a difficult job, but we had at some point 300 workers with us throughout the ordeal, but almost immediately, we were working under the direction and with the supervision of those jurisdictions that the city manager has listed, the Coast Guard, they were in charge, Texas GLO, they were in charge, the Parks and Wildlife Division, they were in charge. Everything we did was in close consultation with them, and as we refer back to the investigation, we'll do an investigation, but obviously, all of this information is passed to the appropriate authorities. They will decide through their own process if anything else needs to happen. They will, will review all the documents, we've been completely transparent, they were in all of the meetings with us. So again, I want to thank all those emergency responders that helped us, including also the Port of Corpus Christi, who was very important when we were talking about limiting ship channel. So again, thank them for their help. As far as what the city is concerned, as the city manager said, your emergency coordinator was on scene immediately and participated every single day in every meeting that we had. Billy's role was to transfer information to the city manager to keep all of you all informed. We've also, as, as we could see, that it was not just Ingleside, it was other places, we thought it was extremely important to work with your communication staff, with Logan Owen, and put up daily press releases so that the citizens would know what's going on, why do I see a boom over there, why do I see a boat over there? We thought it was extremely important to get the public fully informed of what was going on. We set up a 1-800 claims number, we are the responsible party, we're going to take care of this. We also set up a special number for if the public saw something, that they could call us, that we would send a strike team immediately. The message today is we're down to the last 600 feet of boom, so we are in the final stages, the last boom is set up there in, in the Back Bay. And so we hope to pick that up, we were going to pick it up this morning, but the fog was so thick, that makes conditions for our workers dangerous if you can't see what's out there. So it's, we delayed it a little bit, but we think tomorrow, by the end of the week for sure, we should finish all these operations. And somebody said, and then what, are y'all just going to walk away? No. This is our home, we have a thousand employees who call this home, we would never just get up and leave. This cleanup will go as long as it takes, because we're going to take care of it. Any other questions?
Councilwoman Camples. Mr. Klein.
Thank you so much, Andy. I was one of those persons that used that number, thanks to a friend, actually, Armon Alex. We were, you know, of course, extremely concerned, and so when I did call you, I turned around and asked Armon, I was grateful that you texted me back, and I think you left a, you know, a message. But I hope that it's not just because it is, you know, Sylvia Camples, the city, you know, council, that. So I immediately asked Armon, I said, did you get a response? At the time, it was no. So, I, I just feel like we could do a better job, and I appreciate that, that you do see, you know, Corpus Christi as our home, 1,000 employees, yes, we're, you know, I hope that, that this will be, like I, I think I mentioned to our city manager, is a teaching moment, instead of being reactive, that we're going to figure out a way to be proactive. So, I look forward to working with you and some of the other refineries and the other plants that, that are around this area. I don't know, I mean, like I said, this is my first day, so I'm, I'm very concerned. I see Billy out there, and I don't know if it's something you already do, Billy, but I guess that's something, you know, we're going to need to learn, is, is this kind of spill something that is already in our policy? I don't, like you said, Peter, this is the first time that it's happened on your watch, so I'd like to know what that policy is and will be going forward. I guess we'll, it'll be addressed in the, the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camples. Councilman Hernandez. I'm not used to where everybody's at. Looking for you over there.
And for those of Flint Hills, thank you for your response on this thing, I appreciate it. It's unfortunate this had, this happened, and I'm sure you'll come up with your investigation in terms of what that is. Hopefully you'll be able to share that with us when that does happen. Now, Peter, I wanted to ask this, on the lessons learned, you'd kind of touched on it, but in terms of communication to, to the city, how did that work? Was, who was supposed to notify us, and what was the, the process for, for you, you getting the information and then deploying what we need to do from the city?
Right, so Billy Delgado, as Andy mentioned, is our first point of contact, he's the emergency management coordinator.
Who contacts him?
Yeah, right, so the Port of Corpus Christi, Flint Hills, that whole command structure got him contacted, probably the Port of Corpus Christi called them first, as it impacted the port's channel, it was closed. And so, so Billy responded and began to give information to us. One thing we're going to do in the future is a phone call, so we didn't, I didn't get the information as quickly as we should have or could have. And we asked, I asked Sean Strawbridge at the Port of Corpus Christi, and the mayor asked Charlie Zahn, the Chair of Corpus Christi, anytime anything happens in the Port of Corpus Christi or the bay associated with the, the Port of Corpus Christi, pick up the phone and call us, you know, a text maybe, but it'd be nice to get a phone call, so that's one corrective action we're doing, is better communication methods. But once I became aware on Christmas morning, this council, with the prior council, many members still here, were notified through the day from me, as I learned more and more information, to include maps, and we sent you an official document from the GLO. And then our communication from that point forward turned more routine, to include daily media releases that we would get from the command structure through Billy.
Okay, considering that we have several beaches that we manage, as well as Marina, what was the response from the, from Parks and Recreation and from Marina?
So the Marina was not, once we, let's start with the Marina, once we were notified that the oil was making it into the Marina, I personally got a phone call from the command structure, as did the Marina manager. And so, those two, I was aware, they were aware, council was notified all within the same few minutes. On the beaches, the same thing, Billy was aware that some of the paraffin was coming on North Beach and near the Lexington and the, and the Texas State Aquarium, so persons like Robert Dodd, the Parks Director, were notified, and anybody that was working along the beach.
I guess the question is, what is it that we, do we have any capability to address this internally as a city?
No, we don't do, we don't.
We don't have any booms, we don't have any.
We're not in that business, so they, the firm used professional, the group used professional cleanup operators, Miller.
I'm thinking in terms of initial response, in terms of being able to address it.
We don't, yeah.
We don't have any capability?
We don't have any, no, sir. We don't have any envi, we don't have, we don't have it, yeah. We're not in the business of cleaning up oil spills.
Right.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, not so much in terms of cleaning up oil spills, but in order to prevent damage from happening to any of our, our properties.
If I, if I may, the most important part of this was there was not the proper communication. When, that communication should have come straight to us to say, the port's been closed down, there's been a spill, and that didn't happen, in my opinion, that did not happen the way it should have happened right away, to your point, which is to, right, when there's a fire, when you have some sort of event in your home, you are instructed by your, your insurance company to prevent further damage. If we don't know about it, and that is where it begins, then we can't prevent, but they, you know, the, the entities involved, and this is, remember, all under, this becomes a, the leadership becomes a GLO or Coast Guard or all of those entities, but as far as this city is concerned, in my opinion, what has, to a, to a huge degree failed, was the communication. There should have been a direct call to the city manager, a direct call, and, and to say, hey, this has happened. That did not happen. Now Peter has addressed it, I've addressed it, God forbid we have it again, but there absolutely has to be protocol, and it cannot be an email that gets buried in my inbox and has 500 emails, or Peter's inbox that has 500, it has got to be a direct communication with our city manager.
Well, Mayor, and that's, that's fine, and I'm, and I'm glad that that's, that's the case, however, but if there's not any protocols in place for anything for us to do, other than rely on Flint Hills or whoever the, the organization was that had the spill, what is it that we're going to, are we going to be doing? Maybe there's some primitive measures, and maybe you could take a look at that, Billy can take a look at it, as to see what, you know, what we can do, or if we have any equipment in place that can address some of this stuff, so we don't see any damage. Now, you know, this was a minor spill, I understand that, but that might not be the case in the, in the next time, and then, so I want, please take a look at that.
Yeah, if I can, Councilman, let me just add one more thing, that in fact, on today's city council agenda, we do manage the stormwater system for this, for the City of Corpus Christi, this city council, the prior one approved a stormwater fee that allows us to have a program, so there's actually a contract on our agenda today for council consideration to have Miller Environmental be on call, so that if something spills into our waterways, we can call them, they're the experts, we wouldn't want to ramp up.
Whatever that may be, it doesn't have to be city people doing it, it could be someone we call up and they go ahead and put a boom up.
So that's what we're doing, so the answer, part of the answer is, we're, we're getting geared up to get a company on today's agenda for our stormwater program, an on-call contractor, the same one that Flint Hills used.
And, secondly, and I, I've asked this to you directly before, on terms of when there's an oil spill, and how that would affect the possibility of any future desal that would be in the inner harbor, considering the amount of oil that's surrounding the inner harbor, and what, what kind of effect that would have on any production of, of water, if it is, if there so happens to be a desal plant there.
Right, so, Councilman, the Freeze and Nichols, our engineer of record, is aware that the preferred site by the city council is the ship channel and that oil production happens there, so part of that design includes safeguards to, to guard against this if it ever happens in the ship channel. But one of the simple things is that oil floats up to the top of the water surface if it gets into the water, and by design, the preliminary design of the, of the seawater desalination plant has the intake 15 feet below the surface of the water. So, being that far below the surface, and given the fact that oil floats up immediately, they feel that that's a safeguard, there's other measures too, to include boom devices that are part of the plant design. So it has been contemplated, and I know this council has talked about it before, or at least in the past three and a half years, but it's good to bring it up, we appreciate you bringing up that question again. So the safeguards, there's awareness, first of all, from the engineers designing it for consideration of construction, and then there's ways to mitigate against it.
Right, and that, I believe there's not just oil in the, being, or petroleum products in the, in the inner harbor, so we may look at what else is being produced there.
Right.
To address that as well.
Yes, sir, thank you, good points.
We're going to move on to public comment and come back to the subject matter after public comment, if you don't mind. Mr. Science, thank you. And councilmembers, if you've already spoken, if you'll please turn your lights off, sometimes that gets a little confusing up here. Okay, so.
Right, but if you want to speak again, I mean, I guess we can wait until.
No, no, no. Yes, so you put on your light, and then just make sure you turn it off, a lot of times we forget, and then I'm calling, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. So we're going to go to item F, public comment. Before we, we begin, I would like to ask City Attorney Miles Risley, please review the city council meeting rules of decorum.
All remarks shall be addressed to the mayor and city council and not to the council members as, as individuals. Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed. Persons in the immediate vicinity of the city council while in session shall refrain from any disturbing noise, demonstration, or other act disrupting to the city council business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So individuals will be called upon in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comments. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents, and for those commenting in person, I would like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of this meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address prior to beginning your comments. There are two opportunities in which you can make public comment on an agenda item, the first is at this time, the second would be when we actually discuss the item later on, on the agenda. Please choose one. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone, it will let you know exactly how much time you have left to speak. Once your time is up, a buzzer will go off, at which time we truly, sincerely appreciate you wrapping up your comments. And if you have a petition or any other information pertaining to your subject matter, if you will please give that to our city secretary, Rebecca Wirtha, prior to speaking, and she will hand it out to us. So with that said, our first public comment will be from Rachel Caballero.
Hi, guys, New Year, Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock, New Year, new fireworks. Welcome to the new, but old, but new, councilmembers. Let's see, may all of your decisions be made with only the community as a priority. I'd like for you to all take note too, that your friend from District Two lost because the people of Corpus Christi are done with the status quo. We're done with the buddy system, and we're most definitely done with the current quid pro quo relationships with corporations and industry. We are your employer, we should be your priority, and you all will hear us if you want to get reelected. I have faith that Mr. Klein and Ms. Camples will do their best to protect our bays, tourism, and the community quality of life regarding desalination. They have been elected by the people, and the community expects you all to work together, just as you all emphasized during your campaign. This is also expected of you, Mr. Zenoni. You should also be aware that changing the verbiage of desalination plant to inner harbor water supply isn't fooling anyone. This will not deter us from protecting what belongs to the community, not the port, not the city, and not the industry, but the community. Last week, Mr. Chesney suggested that voters determine port commissioner seats. I implore you all to join him in speaking with the other entities, San Patricio County, the port, Nuasis County, that we, the community be allowed to elect port commissioner seats. I'd also ask that there be additional updates regarding Flint Hills, obviously that just happened, we're still at 335 barrels, if you're going to say gallons, say gallons, if you're going to say barrels, say barrels, but update us, because obviously, if the leak is still going since December 25th, and I think that oil was still being found as of two days ago, that it's not just 335 barrels. I think that oil was still being found as of two days ago, that it's not just 335 barrels, there's more. So we need updates on that. We need updates on the EPA updates, and we also need an update on the fines that Flint Hills will incur because of this damage. Um, as you can see, we're no longer sitting idly by to watch our community get sold off to industry, or overzealous politicians with no community empathy. Um, your community is awake now. Most of you barely got elected, so I would keep that in mind, um, because we're not going anywhere, and we're watching everybody. So, good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Caballero. I'm gonna ask that we don't, we, we respect the rules of decorum. Please, no clapping. Uh, Armon Alex.
Mayor, can I just say one thing? So, I just want to make clear, the leak is not still going, the, the leak was, uh, was stopped on Christmas Eve. The cleanup is still going on. It should be wrapped up this week. And the AP, the EPA is involved. They are doing some oversight, and have asked questions of the incident command team, so the EPA is involved. And we're, we're, we're seeing about the fines, that'll be part of the, you know, the conclusion, right? The city does, in our city charter, or our city, uh, codes, uh, have an ability to, to, uh, fine, but it's a municipal court fine, like $2,000 max. So we, we're not gonna do that, because the federal or state fines would be more. We don't want to, uh, I forget the legal term, but if we do a fine, then the state and the feds might not be able to. So we're kinda, uh, waiting to see what they do, but eh, there is a section in our city codes that says it's illegal. It's in the boating, the boating section, and it talks about it's illegal to discharge fluids, like oil and gasoline and so on, into the bay. It's in the boating section, so it probably wasn't meant for industry, but nonetheless, it's there at our disposal if we wanted to use it.
And I will add that this council, Ms. Caballero, is very much interested in what happened, why it happened, and what will happen because it happened. So, just so you know, I just want to let you know that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Armon Alex.
My name is Armon Alex, um, seven four, seven eight four one seven, District Three, Los Encinos area. Folks, what we have before us is an opportunity, a fresh start, a chance for prosperity. As this new city council has been sworn in, our community has hopes. We have dreams and demands of seeing equitable oversight of our city operations. The actions we take today and the following months to correct and prevent man-made environmental disasters will set precedent. Let us acknowledge that our city was not prepared for this oil spill. The city relies on the perpet- uh, the perpetrators that caused the city to clean it up. At first, this does make sense. They caused it, they clean it up. But it's not until you witnessed firsthand the ineffective and ill-coordinated cleanup that's been occurring. For the last week, I personally have visited and documented my trips along our bays coastline. The days that the city council in Flint Hills said that no crude oil materials had been seen at beach locations, I proved otherwise. I would countlessly find toxic remnants scattered through our shorelines, horrifically witnessing children, dogs, families, innocently partaking in beach activities as crude oil bits laid right next to them. My stomach would curl, knowing that they have, had no idea an oil spill had just occurred. We've seen what the city can accomplish in terms of mass communications during times of community safety and disaster management. I spoke to multiple mothers, fathers, tourists, and fishermen that said they wish they had, would be, they would have been given a heads-up to protect their loved ones. A simple message alerting them that the problem was being addressed, and a reassurance that the city would work on their behalf, uh, to prioritize their safety. The city management in Flint Hills announced efforts would be decreased. But just yesterday, yesterday, a group of concerned young citizens and myself collected a bucket full of crude oil off of North Beach at the 3:00 hour. This cleanup is not done. For the future, what can be done? I have visited this governing body on multiple occasions advocating a need for a city committee dedicated. I have warned you guys about needing a committee to real, well, be able to respond to these kind of issues, to be able to, uh, dedicated to respond to resiliency, sustainability, and climate action, following the historical footsteps of other major cities. So let me reiterate this to the brand-new city council. In order for our community to be safe, to be prepared, and to be aware of our city's environmental issues, we need a committee on resiliency and sustainability. This committee could research objectives like creating an environmental disaster response team, understanding the potential impacts of the climate crisis on this community, educating people on being better stewards of our lands, establishing a citywide climate action plan, and so much more. I've got just a few sentences. City council members, I encourage you to reach out to me, and to reach out to my team, to work with your constituents on discussions about this specific committee for our city. You all know that we need this now, more than ever. I want to make this very clear. My fellow community members are paying close attention to the activities and investments this city council makes. We have before us an opportunity, a fresh start, a chance for prosperity. I strongly encourage you all to be on the right side of history and help your constituents, not industry, accomplish our hopes, our dreams, and our demands. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Alex. Maggie Peacock?
Is Maggie here? Oh, you are. I'm sorry. Hi, all. I am Maggie. Um, I live in seven eight four one two, and I'm a 19-year-old student at TAMU CC. Myself, along with, um, many of my peers, are here today because we are disappointed. We are disappointed because our city officials have continuously put profit in pollution over people and the planet by standing, standing behind destructive, multimillion-dollar fossil fuel industries. Now, an environmental disaster has occurred because these corporations y'all have been ca- been coddling. And yet, instead of being transparent and addressing this crisis in a responsible and efficient way, you are relying on the industry that caused the disaster in the first place for advice, reports, and to take lead on when and how to move forward. I may not be an oil spill expert or a cleanup expert, but that system just, just not seem efficient and effective and equitable. And as a point that was made earlier, I would also like to point out that I was another individual that called the Flint Hills line, um, to address this oil spill, and I also never got a comment back or was answered back. And as mentioned before, this oil spill and how we, we will react will set a precedent on how man-made disasters like this are addressed in the future. Something bound to happen if we continue to invest in these facilities with the cr- climate crisis bringing more and more extreme weather events, such as the low temperatures that was likely caused this infrastructure to malfunction and crack the, uh, crack the pipeline. However, myself, along with all of my peers here today, are also here because of hope. And I know many of y'all mentioned this earlier. I am also one to get allergies and, uh, get emotional. But as someone with severe cli- climate anxiety, hope is what drives me every day. Uh, see, there's allergies. And since this is a brand-new council, I do have hope. Um, hope that new priorities will be made, that invest in community members, um, and climate action resilience, and not oil and gas executives. Hope that you all will side with the young people who are working tires, tire, tirelessly every day, um, to secure a safe and equitable future for ourselves. Hope that each and every one of you will have the strength, drive, and passion to do what is right, and meet, and truly listen to the marginalized communities bearing the brunt of this climate crisis, communities of color, indigenous people, queer folks, young people, et cetera. Hope that climate action will finally be implemented in a coastal community on the front lines, something so mind-boggling to me that we don't have yet. And all of this hope is what has moved me to co-found the Gulf Mexico Youth Climate Summit, along with Armon, um, which aims to unite young environmentalists from all around the Gulf of Mexico, give them leadership opportunities, and create effective campaigns through education, advocacy, and policy. You have our information right there in front of you. Um, yesterday, this organization partnered with fellow environmental orgs in the Coastal Bend and picked up this bucket of crude oil, um, al- along our beaches. And this isn't our mess, but it's our home. I also have a few more sentences. We are cleaning up, as we were cleaning up our shores, I saw kids running around in the sand and dolphins swimming in the bay, right there where we were. And I got emotional, because if we stay this course that we are going right now, we will most definitely see less and less of those beautiful things. And we want to work with y'all, and we need to work with y'all. So please be in contact with the Gulf of Mexico Youth Climate Summit, and let's get the ball rolling and fix this mess. There's, there's truly no more time to waste. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock. I'm sorry. Yes.
It's okay. Okay.
Mr. Zanoni?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Yes. Uh, can we, uh, see if we can work with these, uh, climate change activists? Can we set up a meeting with them?
We can, yes.
Thank you.
Alyssa Alanese?
Uh, my name's Alyssa Alanese. I live at 11326 Guest Drive. I am native here to Corpus. I actually am born and raised Robstown. I grew up on the bays. I have been fishing since I was three. My, my father is a guided fisherman, and I have watched throughout my life the bays slowly decline. And it is something that truly does hit home, because when you're watching, your childhood, places that you, the memories that you get out there on the ocean, I mean, we advertise our bay. The whole reason people come to Corpus is because they see our bayside. So why not protect it? Why do y'all turn your blind, blind eye to these large manufacturers that are just gonna continue to destroy the things that we hold precious to the city? I don't have much more to say, because I am gonna get allergies, and I am not that adequate once I get emotional. So what I will say is, work with these organizations. Y'all have the interest. Y'all have the people that want to take care of this land. So if y'all actually pay attention to the people that want to help us, instead of the people that are continuing to put money in the pockets of many people here, pay attention to the people and not the profits. That's what we need to start focusing on. I give away my three minutes, that's it.
Thank, thank you, uh, Ms. Alanese. Chloe Torres?
Good morning. My name is Chloe Torres, and I live at 5430 Saratoga. Uh, because of redistricting, I'm now in District Three. Um, yeah, so, uh, this morning, I was honored to be a part of a press conference with For the Greater Good, Indigenous Peoples of the Coastal Bend, the Gulf of Mexico Youth Climate Summit, um, Chispa, Texas. And, um, I have adapted what I said at the press conference, for now. Um, I am saddened and angered that we, again, have to make public comment over a completely preventable issue. People throughout the Coastal Bend have warned about Flint Hills' resources, harmful practices to agencies, state, uh, local and federal, and local officials who claim to serve in the best interests of all Texans for years. Flint Hills is a serial violator of their state air permits, and it was only a matter of time before their negligence affected their other operations. How many times must they, and the other heavy industry our region is oversaturated with, put our health and environment in danger before you, our elected officials, step up and protect people and not polluters? We are beyond a turning point when it comes to climate change. We are at the point of no return, and each of the organizations that have spoken today have a new and exciting vision for the Coastal Bend. One where we don't just say that life is precious, one where we act like life is precious. We hope that each of you will join us and support us in actualizing that vision. But we are done waiting for you to act like the leaders you claim to be. So we will have to step up. We will be the leaders that we have been waiting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Isabella Reissa?
Um, hello, Isabella Reissa, 326 Punish, um, District Two. Uh, the Flint Hills disaster and the waterline break at Airline in McCardle are reminders that business as usual is no longer acceptable. Um, and as my friend, uh, Elida from Chispa, Texas, who is local, um, says, you can't have accountability without transparency. And so my comment today is for the public and for the historical record. In December of 2016, we had a complete water ban because of Aragon's failed backflow preventer on Valero property. And in December of 2022, we had a Flint Hills oil spill that impacted not just Corpus Christi, but communities along the bay. Flint Hills Resources is actually owned by Coke Industries, and Coke Industries has a political action committee called Coke PAC. In 2022, for this election, Coke PAC donated at least, to at least two council members' campaigns, $1,000 to Mike Pusley and $1,000 to Roland Barada. And in the past, Coke PAC donated $3,000 to Mike Pusley when he ran for the commissioners' court, and $3,000 to Mike Hunter for his previous council races. That is a problem, that we've got, um, those kinds of donations going on, in addition to many of y'all receiving money from Valero PAC. Um, you all should be recu- you should recuse yourself on any issues that are connected to heavy industry. Coke Industries is, owns Flint Hills Resources, and should not have been permitted to take the lead on the oil spill. They have donated to at least three of y'all here. Um, and under the Texas Election Code, Title 15, Chapter 254, it reads, "To comply with state law, candidates, office holders, and political committees used, should use their best efforts to obtain, maintain, and report the full name, address, principal occupation, job title, full name of employer of the individuals whose contributions equal or exceed $500 in a reporting period." It goes furthers to say that, and I'm using a quote from the, from the commission, "For each contribution received from an individual, uh, an oral or written request for missing information should be, um, presented." You, so many of you incumbents didn't have any of that information in your political, um, campaign reports, and so I doubt that you actually made that good-faith effort. And this also, I want to bring up as well, is that, um, there were eight press releases that were connected to the Flint Hills, um, spill. The first one was December 29th, that's on y'all's record. As y'all were speaking earlier, I heard Marina, the council, park director, um, the emergency management team, all these people, Zanoni, doing work. Y'all cost money. Those departments cost money. But Flint Hills has an industrial district agreement and gets a tax abatement. They don't pay taxes, they pay pilots. And this is why we shouldn't be having those things, because these things happen, and we bear the burden of it, and we have to pay that bill. That time that you're spent doing that, you're not spent doing the, the people's work on other things, and so it costs money. We need to get rid of those industrial district agreements. You need to stop coddling industry, and you need to start being accountable to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reissa. Uh, Edward Mardines? Edward? Okay, he's not in the room. Uh, John Weber? Is John Weber here? Okay. And then we'll have, uh, Marilena Garza, after that.
First off, congratulations to the new people on the city council. The people have spoken, obviously. Another peer-reviewed report has come out regarding the dangers of gas stoves. The finding shows 12.7% of current childhood asthma in the U.S. is attributable to gas stove use and childhood asthma. I don't know if you know any kids that have asthma around here. Um, that is approximately 647,000 children. The gas industry has known about this for decades. The incumbent city council has known about this for at least about the last year, that I haven't been, been addressing it. The gas industry has spent millions of dollars lobbying and running misinformation campaigns to prevent regulation, like the cigarette companies did in the past. The current budget on the city for 2023 has $953,348 for marketing gas. The city continues to give cash rebates for the purchase of gas stoves and other gas appliances that are directly impacting our health, which is contrary to the city's mission statement that says, "To meet the vital health, safety, and general welfare needs of the residents, we, and which sustain and improve the quality of life." I once again beg the city council to stop marketing and incentives for gas use, and put together and implement a long-term plan to electrify all gas appliances for the health of the citizens, and to help protect the city from potential massive lawsuits due to the city promoting and selling this dangerous substance. So this is a, a, a risk, a financial risk of the city if it keeps promoting this. And the cigarette industry suffered the worst lawsuit in U.S. history, and the next one is likely gonna be against the natural gas industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Marilena Gar- Thank you, Mr. Weber. Marilena Garza?
Hello. My name is Marilena Garza and I am a small business owner here in the 78401, struggling to revitalize this area. I'm also a nonprofit founder and owner. I have the free store Corpus Christi and we actively work in the 78401 area to try and improve and beautify this area. I think this is the best part of Corpus. When people ask me, I say, "It's the uptown and the downtown area." I just don't understand why the city council doesn't agree. You can't have a West Side development plan without addressing the glaring houselessness crisis, because it's a crisis now. It's not a problem. We're in crisis now with the houselessness that we're, it's all over the city. It's sprinkled out. I'm getting calls from as far as the island, from Robstown, of people asking for my help to help figure out where are we going to put these people? And my response is, "The city of Corpus Christi does not have a place for these people. That's why they're on the sidewalk. That's why they're in the parks. That's why they're wearing on our infrastructure." People are not meant to live on sidewalks. Small business owners like myself, I'm the one that's cleaning the urine and the feces from my storefront. I'm the one that's cleaning up the trash left behind from people who have nowhere to go. Small business owners and nonprofits are the ones that have been handling this issue while city council sits up here and just talks about solutions. The time for talking is over. The time for action is now. We need a low barrier shelter option for these people. We can't develop any part of Corpus Christi until we have this low barrier shelter option. The shelters are full. They have been full since even before COVID. So just saying, "Oh, let's send them to the Good Sam. Let's send them to the Salvation Army", that's not the solution. You're pushing off this big problem onto the backs of taxpayers, small business owners like myself and nonprofits. All of us nonprofits are taxed to the max. Throwing money at us is not the solution. The solution is to bring back that agenda item, the harbor, the safe harbor agenda item that y'all were too scared to talk about. You removed it from the agenda item. I've called plenty of times, asking, begging. Now I'm here. Get familiar with my name. I will be here all this cycle. I vote every election and so do my friends. I hope you keep your seats. Thank you.
Ms. Garza, thank you. And I'd like to address that because that very issue...
Are we following decor?
We absolutely are. Factual sta-
Let's follow decor.
Would you like to explain what decor is? Because we are able to make factual statements because I want to make certain, and this is in your favor, ma'am, I want to make sure that you're understanding where we are as a council. And we said this probably what, Peter? I don't know, a couple of meetings ago, maybe three? I don't know. That, that we must address. We must address for the very reasons that you are, you, you state here today, that the homelessness issue, which is a national critical issue everywhere. I'm not interested in, and this is a very passionate subject for me. I'm not interested in what everyone else is doing or not doing. I'm interested in what are we doing? Councilman Martinez and I, who, you know, is, is not part of the council this year but, or this term, but he, he had a big passion for homelessness. We, along with city staff, and we made this public, are pushing, and this, this council is going to continue, to, to do something that doesn't exist now for those very people who do not want to go certain shelters or can't go because they don't fit that mold. We don't have that. I don't like the term "low barrier," but in reality, okay, that's what it is. We've spoken with Peter. We actually just, I think we just passed something in council, Salvation Army. Phase one with Salvation Army was federal and state monies that we receive are going to them to expand by, I believe is 129 beds maybe, what they have now. Okay, but those beds aren't necessarily for the population that you speak of and that I also care about. The phase two, and I made it clearer than daylight the day I was there standing in their gym, because that's where that phase is going to come into, that gym. That gym is also going to be a part of phase two, which is that very thing you talk about. Let's call it open entry, whatever, that kind of thing. So that was going to be phase two and those discussions are being had. I want you to know. And back to communication is very difficult, Ms. Garza, and we appreciate your voice. That is what this is for. But sometimes the communication doesn't reach everyone. The, the news release or the, you know, social media or the, you know, public speaking on that particular subject. So I invite you, I invite you to reach out to whoever your council member is. You can call my office. You can call Mr. Zenoni's office to follow where are we on it. But we, but I'll tell you, phase one is expanding the beds at Salvation Army, which is extremely needed and, and that helps a lot of people transition out of homelessness. So that is what was going to happen first. Second phase is that shelter. So please know I'm on it. And so is the council.
And I will hold you accountable to that, Mayor. You know, I'm a part of a lot of your stakeholder meetings and I've been in a lot of your meetings, listening and trying to be patient, but people's lives.
I understand. I understand. Thank you, ma'am. Next we'll have Dustin Cronin. Cronin?
Good evening, city council and mayor. After yesterday of turning 33 years old, I'm here to speak to about educating our first responders and our city council about autism awareness. And the reason why it's important is because our first reason is to know the difference between intoxication and the common signs of autism. And another reason is, is people with autism or Asperger syndrome not knowledgeable enough to know the criminal charges or of certain kind of criminal behaviors or what they could be charged with. People take advantage of them all the way around the world. Excuse me. I'm sorry about that. But, um, so today. And another reason is hanging out or caught up with unsavory people who parents know, don't know anything or unfamiliar with. Or if they're caught, or parents also pretend to be very protective of their adult children with it than the ones without it. And please excuse my repetitiveness or anything or nervousness. And did anybody who in here did not get a copy of this? I know we've met somewhere. Everybody got a copy of? All right. And that's all I have today.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Adam Rios?
Hello, council. Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court, here in Corpus Christi. I am going to speak on something that I'm passionate about, as most of you know. Some of you are new to council. I advocate for skate parks and BMX parts, parks in different communities. This passion started with the Apache Skateboard Company, San Carlos Reservation, Arizona. I'm a proud member of the American Indian Movement Central Texas Chapter. My brother Paul Daniel runs the Southwest Chapter of the American Indian Movement. And I wanted to mention that briefly because as much as I'm going to talk about BMX parks, I want to empathize with some of the things that were being said earlier with the advocates. Growing up surfing here in Corpus Christi with the Texas Gulf Surfing Association and working at that time with the Surf Rider Foundation. This is going back to 1984, 85, 1986. I remember surfing and I remember oil spills. And I remember tar on my surfboards and I remember tar on my feet. And having moved to areas like Hawaii and living in Austin for a long time, obviously I grew a little more conscious of environmental concerns and how they impact the health of a community. Now, having said that, I would like to shine some light and some positivity on some things that I see happening here in Corpus, like the revitalization of Coal Park Skate Park, which just hosted a South Texas Contest Series three weeks ago. And we are working in conjunction with several organizations here and statewide and nationally to bring national attention to Coal Park Skate Park. The phase two of that was to get into BMX parks, which is now happening at Salinas Park. And that happened because of a bond issue and money and attention. And that was organizations that I work with, working together with members of city council, the mayor and our city manager. Now we are doing something at Salinas Park because what I used to hear sometimes was, "Okay, well, that's at Coal Park. Where are the other parks going to happen?" "Well, now the BMX park's going to happen at Salinas Park, right there on Greenwood." And I've already seen the work that has been done. The way they have mowed it down. They had cleared the debris out. They have cleared unnecessary tree. They've taken all the trash out. And you're starting to get a visualization now of the potential of that park. So what I wanted to do is, he's not here today unfortunately, but Mr. Dodd has been very welcoming at Parks and Recreation. He's had an incredible open door policy. We are actually working now to start the next phase now that we've cleaned everything up and the jump track is there, the banks are there. We are now talking about providing the right soil that needs to go into that park. And I'm happy to say that he and I have come together and met somebody who is very interested in the contract of making that happen. And that person is born and raised here and he is a surfer from here. And he does live in Flower Bluff. And I want to mention his name. His name is Zach May. Outside of that, obviously, it's the first council member, or the first open comments of the new year. I'm here all the time as well for my friends that are watching at home, my family watching at home. Again, I always try and be a positive advocate for things that are going on here. Obviously, there are a lot of voters here. There's a lot of passion flying back and forth. So I just wanted to shine some light on that. And thank you for, the gentleman who just spoke on autism. My oldest son Atticus is high functioning autism. And I definitely am interested in what he had to say. And I'd like to get a copy of the information that you passed out. I appreciate you, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rios. Let's see, we have Errol Summerlin. Make it quick. Talk, talk, talk fast.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Errol Summerlin. I live in Portland and I'm a member of Cape. I want to take my one minute to remind everyone that mistakes are made when you are in a rush to complete a project. From the flawed design of the New Harbor Bridge to hitting a submerged pipeline in the inner harbor to the recent Flint Hills oil spill, to the tanker that collided with Moda's pier, to the future prospect of 80 more LNG-laden vessels a year on the Kinta Channel, multiple desalination projects in Corpus Christi Bay, to the port's new initiative on carbon capture, which plans to inject CO2 into the Nuasis Delta. Mistakes will most certainly be made if this rush to market remains unfettered. I ask you to slow things down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summerlin. And then we have two constituents, Webex, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's right. The first is Sherwin Del Souce.
Sue, 6030 Tapas Street. Please play video. I'm here to urge the city to consider making protected bike paths. This is a protected bike path. So you'll see that there is a raised median. It prevents cars from swerving onto the bike lane. Protected bike paths reduce injury by 90%. And this is according to the American Journal of Public Health. This is not my opinion. And this is not a protected bike path. So this is what you typically see in Corpus Christi. There's paint on the road and people have actually died here. I want you to think of all the people, all the people who do not have access to cars. Teenagers who are trying to get to a job, seniors, people who want to exercise, people who don't have access to a driver's license for medical reasons, legal reasons. And then there are lower income people, people who are essential workers, minimum wage earners. They cannot afford a car. It's just impossible. The rising cost of gas, the rising cost of repairs, inflation. And if we had a protected bike path, you're providing a free way to get around. Transportation needs to be accessible to everybody. So when I heard about this reconnecting communities pilot grant application, this is a $1 billion federal funding program. And the purpose of this is to mobilize marginalized people. This program specifically mentions public transportation and protected bike paths. This program is about helping lower income people, the people who don't have access to other neighborhoods, the people who are left out. This is what this program is for. And when I looked at the application that you guys have, there is no mention of protected bike paths at all. Nothing. And whenever I speak to a city council member or someone in the city, they always say, "Oh, we can't have protected bike paths because of the cost." Okay, well, here's a program, $1 billion program, and you filled out this application and there is no mention of protected bike paths. So the cost isn't the problem. The money is there. Why didn't you mention protected bike paths? The job of the city staff is to understand the needs of the community and work accordingly. They know about this need for protected bike paths. This is being done in all cities. Houston has plans for 1,800 miles of protected bike paths. San Antonio has hundreds, Austin as well. And all the cities in America, Canada, Mexico, around the world in the developed nations are all doing protected bike paths. For some reason, Corpus Christi isn't really with a program. So we really need to consider this. City staff really need to look at this application and they really need to include protected bike paths because the money is there. You just need to ask for it. And I want the city council members to ask why they didn't include it. One in three Americans own a bike. This isn't a hobby. This is a way people get to places. This is a way people exercise. According to the CDC, you need to exercise like 30 minutes a day, at least five times a week. So please consider protected bike paths, especially when the funding is there. I just want to mention that the person who filled out the application form is Dan McGinn, from what I understand, from according to my research. And yeah, just please, everyone in the city council member has a copy of the, an email with the link about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Del Souce. Next is Connor Rice.
Good afternoon, mayor, council and community. My name is Connor Rice of 78412 and I'm a proud born and raised citizen of this great city. I graduated in 2020 as class president from Veterans Memorial High School and now I am a third year of being proud as an Islander. As many of you know, over the last three years, I've had the honor and privilege of joining the fight for civil rights with a concentration for students. And at this point, I have to extend my solidarity to my climate crisis colleagues there in person. But that's not what I'm here to talk about today. As my family can attest, I spend most of my time traveling across the state for my work on civil rights. I've partnered with over 20-plus state and national agencies and organizations for this fight. I have to mention though, the refuge though, of always returning home to this great city and remembering the shoulders on which I stand on here. Whether it's the inspiration for Dr. Hector P. Garcia or getting to walk down shoreline with civil rights legend Dolores Huerta, whom I read about as a child in a history book. It was just after midnight though, on November 19th of 2022, that Colorado Springs suffered a tragedy. We as Americans lost five lives and 25 injured. In less than 36 hours though, I was joining the Community Partner National Conference Call from an invitation by Deputy Director Paula Bate of the FBI. In this call, we were joined by the DOJ, ATF, DHS and civil rights leaders like myself from across the nation. The very next day, I was reaching out to the leaders of the LGBTQ organizations here in our hometown to extend my condolences and my continued dedication to making this world a more equitable place for all. I am here though, today, because of all the answers they gave me when I asked them, "How many of our elected officials from the city reached out to them?" November 30th, the Department of Homeland Security and the National Terrorism Advisory Bulletin added the LGBTQ community as a top target of domestic terrorism alongside faith-based communities. As Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg once said, "Always do something outside yourself." And that's why I'm here. The city of Corpus Christi currently has no resources listed on their website about the steps of how to report a hate crime. Actually, the term "hate crime" isn't even that- Actually, the term hate crime isn't even found on our city's website. We all stand on the shoulders of those who came before us to build this city. Dr. Hector P. Garcia himself was the victim of hate crimes because of his own work. We bear the responsibility of not only upholding the legacy we step into, but ensuring the work continues. I humbly ask for our elected officials in our brand-new city council to join me in 2023 about being proactive that the resources of how to report a hate crime are accessible to our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mayor, that concludes the public comment, period.
Okay, thank you. So that will conclude, and we are going to go ahead and go back to our discussion, we had a couple of lights on regarding Flint Hills oil spill cleanup status. So, Mr. Seines, if you'd like to come back up. And then Councilman Suckley, I think you had a question?
Thanks again, Andy, for coming and being patient. So with respect to the containment of the oil spill, it sounds like it did not, despite tidal influences and tides and currents and things, none of it made it out to our Gulf, to the Gulf, Gulf beaches?
We don't have any reports of that. The Coast Guard was very vigilant, they put fixed wing aircraft and helicopters up to look through the entire area. We never received a report that it had gone beyond the bay or the La Quinta Channel area, but I'm not the expert on that.
Okay. And I mentioned earlier, I've lived here for 40 years, but it was touched on in public comment about tar on a surfboard. And I was back at the beach those years that he was talking about, and there were several oil spills that you'd see the effects immediately, and then six or 12 months later, you'd be at the beach, and all of a sudden, you'd have dots of tar on your swim trunks or shirts or what have you. So especially with this being a cold, cold event, do we anticipate, when it does heat up, some of that remainder being released and showing up at North Beach or what have you, so that our folks can experience the dots of tar on their belongings?
That could be a possibility. We're going to be on the lookout for everything over the next six months. Oil, as has been explained by the city manager, changes its characteristics, and so it could show up in different ways, but we're prepared to look for those signs that we're looking for. I want to have Tom Baldassar, our expert in this area, just say a few words about how oil does change and what to look for. Tom, can you help me?
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Baldassar, I'm the Regional Operations Manager for our Pipelines and Terminals business for Flint Hills Resources. To your question and to Andy's point, on the night of the release, it was cold, it was 22 degrees, the water temperature was cold. This is a lighter type crude oil that's very paraffinic and appears like wax, as you had seen in the news reports and the media. So through the tidal influences and the winds that we saw, and the heat and the sun that we've had, we've seen those changes in the crude oil. In partnership with the TGLO, in partnership with the Coast Guard, and with the agencies, we expect the crude to continue to weather, but the dark, dots of tar that you're describing, we don't expect to see that from this type of crude oil.
Okay, thank you.
And whomever wants to address this, so what do you say about the bucket of oil or what it was that they found yesterday? Is it, and I know you're scaling down, but what exactly, back to the point of why Peter brought you up, was the timeline. We're going to get a timeline, you guys need to maybe let us know, I have no idea, right? What does this look like? Does a timeline mean it could be six months? Does it mean weeks? I don't know, and I'll let you touch on that. But the second thing of, I've got great concern about this bucket of whatever, oil or whatever, what do you call it?
Yeah, it's just like clumps of, it looks like jelly.
Clumps of jelly, that's oil. So is that expected?
Yes, ma'am. So I'll answer both questions. So the investigation is going to be ongoing, and that'll take some time. That will be vetted with third-party consultant experts of engineers that'll help us understand all the root causes of the event. In terms of the response efforts, the boom being pulled out of the bay, that's advice from the TGLO and making sure that we further don't impact the wildlife and the ecosystem. We do have assessment teams that are going out twice a day to go out there and scale the beaches, to look for product, to understand that, and that's why we're continuing to leave the call number up as well. So if the citizens do see something, we have a team that can dispatch to it. So by taking the boom out of the bay and out of the water, we're decontaminating that boom, we're putting that boom aside, but we are going to maintain a force to be able to respond to incidents, to respond to calls, to be able to go out there and pick up any remainder material that is discovered. Again, with partnership with the agencies, we expect that to continue to decrease. We're not closing up and wrapping up and walking away, because this is our home. We're going to expect to continue that for a period of time to make sure that if there are identifiable, excuse me, identifiable product, that we do pick that up.
Okay, so you're committed to continue. I think that may have been, I guess, taken as you're wrapping it up.
Yes.
You're not wrapping it up, you're just obviously scaling down from what you started.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, significant decrease in resources based on what we are observing out in the bay, based on the cleanup activity that has occurred. But Friday, not everybody's picking up and going home, we're going to be here, make sure that it's done right.
Okay. Councilman Roy.
So I had one question that I just wanted to get a clarification on. Does Flint Hills, once there's an oil spill, do you have internal staff that works on handling that, or do you use a vendor?
So we utilize a third-party contractor that is trained in oil spill response and cleanup. We have, some of our employees are trained in that, especially for the first responders that are there immediately, but we hire properly trained employees that have the training and hazardous materials management to go out there and clean up.
So my question is, where is that organization? Are they local, or where are they located at?
Yes, sir. The oil spill, we call them OZROs, oil spill response organizations, the ones that we hired for this response are local to Corpus Christi.
And what's the timeframe from the time that you called them to the time that they're on site? How long does it normally take?
Depends on the type of resources that we're requiring, but it's rather immediate. So the time that we identified and we were called in, we had contractors on site that evening to work through the response.
That evening?
Yes, sir.
So that's hours or?
Within a half hour, hour, depending on where they're responding to and where they're responding from.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Campos.
Yes, thank you. One of the questions that came up with Representative State Todd Hunter was that he was not notified by the GLO, and that really is disturbing, because I thought that was the first thing that Flint Hills would do. What is the process, actually, to report? Who do you report to? And what order?
Yes, ma'am. So we reached out to all the local delegation, I didn't directly, but we have an Intergovernmental Affairs Officer, Bill Oswald, and he was on the phone with the local representatives, with the senators and their offices, to make sure that they knew what was going on, and if they had specific questions, we would provide them the bullet points that we used, the latest numbers, whatever our plan was, and try to come up with a timeline. They were most interested in how long is it going to take you to clean this up? So we sent them information through their legislative offices. I want to, I called Bill Christmas Day and bothered him like everybody else, but he was on the phone with him almost immediately. So I don't know if there was a gap there, council member, but I can find out.
There certainly was a gap, because he stated that it was, he received the information through email. Like the mayor said, no, we need to, you know, know immediately, a phone call, an email is not sufficient.
I agree.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campos. Councilman Suckley.
Andy, thank you very much. You know, most petrochemical products, as you know, has a signature or, you know, an identifiable DNA, if you so, if you will. So I would assume that you all have taken samples to determine what this particular petrochemical spill looks like and the source of it, so that as we look for this to reoccur, we can identify that it came from this spill or whether or not it didn't. Is that, is that not correct?
Absolutely, yes. We took signatures from all of the different locations where it was showing up, and so they'll do the DNA work. That's going to be part of the investigation, because we've got to know exactly how far did it go, how long did it take, you know, the process. So yes, the DNA part of getting a signature on the oil was taken, and all of that is being analyzed at this time.
Okay. Yeah, and talking about some of the tar balls that washed up on shore when, when all these kids were surfing back in the day. You know, they did that analysis on some of that that was impacting our beaches and found that it came from the Ixtocs oil spill that occurred off the Gulf of, or in the Gulf of Mexico, from a well that was drilled by Pemex, the Mexican government. So it can, that's why it's so important for us to keep track of where this exactly is coming from.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman. I think that's all the questions. Peter, do you have anything else regarding this subject?
I think that's it. Just to repeat, though, we did say to Councilwoman Campos's comment that the next time, if there is a next time, that we do need telephone calls, not emails, because this is a pretty urgent situation, so at least the city manager and the mayor of the city of Corpus Christi need to be phoned, need a telephone call. So we can know and be aware and activate our teams.
Thank you. Mr. Seines, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, so your next item, Mr. Seines.
Great, yes, ma'am. So we have two more items, and they'll go pretty quick on our city manager's report, but the next one is a progress report on the Mud Bridge in City Council District Four. And Ernesto Del Garza, our Public Works Director, is going to give the council and the community an update. Okay, four and five, we don't want to cut out Councilman Hernandez. So last week, we did go to the site so that the media and our own social media could in fact see that work is happening. We wanted to spell some statements that work wasn't happening, and when you saw crews, they were just kind of estimating time and money and that type of thing. Our goal is to get the bridge opened up today, as last week, last Wednesday, we had a much better understanding after our report of the bridge's integrity was reviewed by TechDOT. We had a much better, better understanding beginning last week as to how long it's actually going to take now to get the bridge open. So it went from a three-day estimation to a 30-day, to now it's about a three-month estimation because of pylons, the bridge columns that need to be repaired. About half, 22 of the 55 are in disrepair. And, but the good news is, the subcontractor is mobilizing teams to get those fixed. The embankments, as Ernesto will show us, are near complete. The embankment was the beginning of the sinkhole. So Ernesto is going to give us a quick update tomorrow at 10 o'clock. We'll continue to update the community. We do weekly updates at 10 a.m., either at City Hall or on the site. This week, since we're doing this update here, we'll do the update at City Hall, and that's provided live on our social media networks, as well as covered by our local media, and we want to thank them for covering us. So Ernesto, you going to give us a quick update?
Yes, sir. Okay. Good afternoon, mayor, city council. I'm Ernesto Del Garza, Director of Public Works. Also have with me Assistant Director of Public Works, Gabriel Hossain, in case there's questions about the history of our program. I would first like to start off by thanking our partners that have been working closely and diligently with us on this project. Anderson and Columbia is our contractor, Freez and Nichols are our engineering consultant. And then now Southern Road and Bridge is our specialty subcontractor. Today's update will provide you with some history and background on the project, as we have some new council members joining us. A timeline of events of what work has been completed to date, and I will continue this update with providing you with the project plan and an estimated time for completion. So background, history, the bridge was constructed in 1985, so it's a 37-year-old bridge. While the bridge is inspected every two years by TechDOT, the city is responsible for maintaining the bridge. We, as the city, have been tackling the ongoing maintenance issues as it relates to this bridge, and now that the Public Works Department has been created, I have been tasked with developing and creating systems and plans to assist in improving our infrastructure and how we will maintain our infrastructure. With the support of mayor and city council, placing infrastructure as a top priority for our city, roughly $336 million has been invested in roadwork improvements over the last three budgets. With the last two bond programs, voters approved funding for the design of and reconstruction of Yorktown Boulevard from Rodfield up to the Mud Bridge. And then future plans include an advanced funding agreement with TechDOT for the Highway Bridge Replacement and Rehabilitation Program. So the recent update here is on Monday, December 12, the city initiated an emergency closure of Yorktown Mud Bridge to perform repairs to a sinkhole that resulted from damage to the bridge's riprap embankment caused by erosion. We put together a timeline of events from December 12 to today. You know, this is just a quick reference of this timeline. Attached here, once we initially were notified of the incident, we took immediate action to begin repairs. Since the project began on December 12, tides and weather have limited the city's contractor to seven physical working days. So even though, you know, we've had about 27 calendar days since the event, the contractors only had access to the site 17 days. During that time, the contractor has completed the east side embankment. As of today, the contractor is forming and setting up the steel for the west side embankment. Our project plan right now that we have put together is we've collaborated with our contractor, our engineer, and subcontractor to have come up with three-phase approach for reopening the Yorktown Mud Bridge. The first step is restoring the embankment along the bridge. This phase is expected to be completed next week. The phase two includes addressing the 22 pilings. Given the complexity and scale of these repairs, it is expected that this phase will extend the timeline of the project. Contractors are estimating that it will take roughly 70 working days to complete all the repair work, with day one of phase two starting on the 16th of January. That's when they will mobilize and put the barges out to start the work on the pilings. Finally, phase three includes the planned construction of replacement, of a replacement bridge that will begin with the bidding process in 2025, one year earlier than initially planned by TechDOT. As it relates to funding, funds for this project will be utilized from the Stormwater CIP.
Okay, and Ernie, on this slide here, this is very important for the community, April 6 is the estimated completion date of all the work. In other words, the bridge will be reopened on April 6, April 7. I asked for that to be presented today, it's a risk, because there's things that could cause that to slip, like tidal influences, extreme weather events, supply chain issues, more unforeseen conditions. But right now, we're saying, based on what we know, based on 70 working days, not calendar days, and based on decent tides and decent weather events and supply chain, April 6 is our target. Okay, so the bridge will not be open until April 6. However, that date is a moving timeline, but we're going to take the risk, because we want the community to be aware of what we're thinking, and that's what we're thinking, is that hopefully we can get it by April 6. Everything's been progressively in order, you saw that day by day by day. Ernie and his team are working closely with our contractor, Anderson Columbia, we want to thank them for the work they're doing, but that's it right there, so April 6. Thank you.
All right, our next steps include Public Works has CIP funding dedicated for bridge rehabilitation. Moving forward, we will begin working with an on-call structural engineer to review all TechDOT reports to address any critical needs accordingly. At that time, we will proceed with creating a proactive maintenance program based off of the consultant's recommendations. Communication strategy will continue to ensure we maintain constant level of service, we'll be providing continuous updates throughout the project. Information can also be found on our city's website. The city's Public Works Department will continue communication with TechDOT on the Mud Bridge as needed. Realizing the importance of this bridge to the community, we are diligently working to get the bridge back open as quickly as we can and making sure that it's a safe bridge to travel upon. Thank you all, and I stand by for any questions that you all might have.
Councilman Suckley.
Thank you, mayor. In the presentation, it was mentioned that TechDOT inspects those bridges every two years. How could we go to having 22 failing pilings in a matter of two years or less since the last inspection?
Right, so the report, you're referring to the 2021 report, TechDOT hired a consultant to do their Brin Sap inspection, and they identified four. Our structural engineer identified 22. I don't know, I wasn't there at the time, but what I can say is that our structural engineer got on a boat and physically did soundings on every single pile. I can't speak to TechDOT's inspection and process, whether or not they did do that, but when they do a sounding, they're trying to look for hollow, hollowness and spalling of the concrete. Our contractor, our structural engineer, did that, and also investigated the vent caps as well, and also the beams, the precast beams. And so as far as TechDOT's process on how they come up with their findings, I cannot speak to that, but I know that ours were solid as far as our engineer physically touching, getting on a boat and touching every column, and so I would go with that more so than what a report has from 2021.
Well, I know we can't control what TechDOT does, but it seems like we should work on collaborating with them and having some common expectations as to what the inspections are. If the inspections are not doing us any favors of identifying critical issues, which we found ourselves, or a driver found themselves, we're kind of, they're kind of wasting their time. they're kind of wasting their time.
Yeah, Councilman, can I just clarify? So the report that TechDOT did, first of all, TechDOT is the premier bridge experts in the state of Texas. They own more miles of bridge than anybody in Texas. They have the technical and engineering capacity. So the report from 2021 did tell us about deficiencies. The problem was we had no teams in place at the time to read it and understand it. And even today, we still don't. We have no bridge experts in the city organization. Ernesto is changing that, so we're going to have him soon, within three months. But I would submit that the four pilings that were identified in the 2021 report are severe in nature. The other ones, the other 18, are not as severe. So it's quite likely in the two-year span since the last report, more failure has occurred. So I think some of them were not identifiable because they weren't in that bad shape then. But in a two-year timeframe, as the bridge ages, it rapidly begins to age. And so I think that's what's happened. As Ernesto said, we can't speak to the work, but TechDOT's a good partner of ours. They do this for free, saving local taxpayer money. So and we do collaborate with them. And Ernesto, who has started this career in TechDOT, has a lot of good connections there. And that was another plus in bringing him on board. So we will continue to collaborate with TechDOT. But again, the premier bridge persons in the state of Texas. And we can improve our working processes with them. And in-house, we're going to begin to do that as well. Just to remind the council and the community, this is that October 1 was the second year, the beginning of the second year. We're 15 months or so into having a stormwater bridge program in the city that we have not had before. And it takes time to develop systems, protocols, standard operating procedures, and build a team. And we're doing that, though. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Two more quick questions. On the timeline, you had a couple different periods that were, I guess, on top of holidays, where work was paused for roughly three days each time.
Yes.
So if we have an urgent situation, which I deem this to be urgent, yes, it's the holidays, and we all want to enjoy the holidays. And I'm sure maybe the contractors are less willing to be engaged. But if we get to April and the date keeps on slipping, and we don't have a completed bridge, and we have, let's say, God help us, an early hurricane this year, I don't want to be without a bridge when hurricane season comes around. And we look back and say, oh, we had six days there that we could have been mobilized and working on the bridge. Lastly, is on the timeline here for the completion of the new bridge, it looks like 2028 identified as an estimate. You know, Flower Bluff's been very patient in this rebuilding of Yorktown, expansion of Yorktown, having started over in Mr. Hernandez's district, I guess Staples area, through all the different phases. And so Flower Bluff's anxious to get that next phase approved in the bond. So I hate to see any sort of delay in this bridge causing a delay in or being put in a back burner. Flower Bluff's finally seeing that expansion and improvement in Yorktown, which sadly needs it very badly. So I'd just like to say, I think we need to do everything we can to make sure that the expansion of Yorktown occurs. Figure out a plan, even if the bridge is not completed, that we still figure out a way to accommodate completing Yorktown if we get it approved in the next bond.
I understand, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman, just so we don't get too panicked, if there is a hurricane, we'll drive across the bridge. It's drivable. The biggest thing was the sinkhole. That will be complete this Friday. The restoration of that area, the embankments. So at this point, people have been driving across that bridge with the pylons as they have been, and there's been no failure. We don't really, I mean, it could happen, but the chances of it happening are less. So the way we're going to construct it is keeping it close for the safety of the workers and the motors. But if there was a hurricane, we would use the bridge. Yes, sir.
Right, to add to that, Peter and Dan, to your concerns, is we do know, and it is absolutely critical, and I think I speak for you, that this bridge must stay a priority. Thousands of residents are affected by this. They're having to spend more money on gas to go around. They're having to, you know, everybody's going down the same route for the most part, you know, cutting through Rodfield. And that's an inconvenience, too, for residents. I know that sounds a little bit self-centered. But when you're used to your own neighborhood traffic, you're used to your own neighborhood traffic. So this is a priority. It will continue to be. I can tell you what will not happen will be that scenario that you just described was, God forbid, hurricane altogether, but one coming early. And I know that I speak for you all to say, this is why the communication and the transparency is extremely important. We will know well beforehand. If this April date is not looking like a reality, we will know well before six days prior with, you know, the communication that you have been giving, Peter, which is the point. It is communication, transparency, and being preemptive and proactive on situations.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Ernie, so the cost of the repairs that we're doing now to make the bridge usable is going, that cost is going to be borne by the city, obviously. And so when we talk about redoing this bridge, are we going to tear this bridge out and build a new one? Is that what the plan is?
Correct, yeah. So we're going to come in with a new typical section of the future project that's tying into, from Yorktown onto Mud Bridge. What I don't have is the specifics on the phasing of construction. But what we did discuss was the issues with the 22 pilings and then how they would phase construction once that work did get started. So in a way, it's, I'm not saying it's a good thing that the bridge is having the troubles that it's having, but this work will actually help us out if we have to build in phases and tear half the bridge and put traffic on one side or the other.
So will we be replacing the columns that are there now?
Everything will be replaced.
Everything will be removed and replaced?
Yeah, but we may have to use portions of it for traffic control, depending on how they face construction in the future. In its current condition, that would not have been possible.
Right.
So.
Similar to what we're doing up in the Cal Island area, as you enter the city, the traffic shifted to one half of the bridge. The other one's been demolished.
Yeah.
And Councilman, the TechDOT's funding the replacement, it's estimated to be $20 million. That's a TechDOT.
Okay, so they are going to fund the replacement? That was going to be my next question.
They're funding the $20 million replacement, this bridge and a bridge leading to TAMUCC as well. And so we're thankful for that because that doesn't get on the local taxpayer dollars. And, right, but and then one other thing, and Ernie touched on it, is that they're advancing the whole beginning of the new bridge by a year. And so initially, was nothing was going to happen until 2026. Now, because of this, and now talking with them, Ernie actually spent Christmas Eve with them.
Yeah.
They will be moving it to 2025. So that means the design, the engineering, the utility work. We're thinking three years after that before it's completely constructed. And finally, it will be four lanes in each, two lanes in each direction. So Yorktown's going to be two lanes and a senatorial lane. The current bridge is a two-lane bridge. It'll turn into a four-lane bridge to match up with the road.
Yeah, that was my third question, is are we going to, the new one will be built to match what we're doing with the expansion of Yorktown.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, I want to go back to what I said in my opening remarks. We have to figure out a way to do things faster. And this whole deal with TechDOT, and I know TechDOT is a giant animal that moves at its own pace. But we have to work with them to try to figure out the shortest distance between point A and point B to get this done within a reasonable amount of time.
Right.
And when you start talking about this is going to be 2025, I mean, you know, that's a long time off. I mean, and so as the mayor pointed out, this has been a major inconvenience for a lot of people. So we need to see what we can do to make this happen as fast as we possibly can.
And we can start by calling on our state representative.
Yeah, I agree.
Some of it's the, right, some of it's the programming and the funding, I think it's most of it is the funding availability. So $20 million is, it's not a quick change in a line item budget. It was identified to be available in that formula funding category in '26, but they're going to move another project around and make it available in '25, so.
Yeah.
Right, but we're working with them. Ernie spent the week of Christmas getting the deal done to get it advanced to 2025. And already, we can begin to assess, we're already doing this. Whereas, because there's some city water lines that are under the channel or at least there's some type of utility under there. We're trying to figure out where are those now? What do we have to do with AAP Texas? Judith Talavera was here this morning.
Right.
There's utilities that they have to move. So we're beginning those conversations now. We're not going to wait till 2025 to figure that out.
Okay.
So that work has begun to a point of working faster.
Okay. And speaking of bridges, and I know we're not agenda discussing this, but I just want to ask for, we need to ask TechDOT to come before us and give us an update on Harbor Bridge.
Right, they're going to do that, Councilmember. So they do come in quarterly. So February 21 is their next scheduled briefing.
Okay.
And they'll be in, them and Flatiron de Gatos, their spokesperson, will be February 21 at City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, that we're moving that from 2026 to 2025. Is that being flipped with the Ocean Drive Bridge? Or is that going to be done?
Same time.
Same time in 2025? Okay, do we have that in writing?
We do not. I have requested it to get it in writing.
Okay. All right, so that, there it goes. It's not, it's not.
My email was sent to TechDOT to send me an email in writing to get that in writing because they verbally told me that. And so I knew that somebody would ask that they would want to see it in writing.
Oh, yeah. It's not, it's not real unless it's in writing. And even then, it's, you know, that's half the battle there.
Sure.
Because obviously, they still need to get the funding. And I believe their funding requirement is 18.7 or almost 18.8 million.
20 mil for the New York town.
And our portion of that is 1.5 million?
Current, which we were going to do in kind. It was in-kind maintenance to our current bridges that we have.
Okay, so in all this, and this came up with the discussion for the regional parkway, was the environmental aspect of this, right? This is going over the Oseho Creek or Oseho Bay. So the environmental stuff has to be done well in advance before you get a single thing done. So who is doing that responsible? Is TechDOT is going to be responsible for that?
TechDOT will handle the environmental document.
So we'll need, we'll know whether the things are happening if they're doing the environmental work, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and you know when that's going to happen? Are you, I'm guessing you're with?
Part of my request, yes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that these things are.
Right.
Sequential, right?
You're right on track with the expectation that, you know, saying that date, but also showing what's your schedule? What's your commitment? When did environmental clearance start? When does utility clearance start? To ensure that on that timeframe, the 2025 that any date will be met. That's exactly right.
Okay, so you'll keep us abreast on when these things happen? Because I would imagine the environmental stuff would have to happen either at the end of this year or the beginning of next year.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you. I just want to echo, I think, something that Councilman Pusley mentioned, the timeliness of this project. And I think some of the frustration with the community is that, and again, I understand the reason for the kind of changing narrative. But what they heard initially was going to be three days, then it was going to be three weeks, and now it's at the three months. And there's some kind of rolling of eyes, I think, over that. I think certainly, safety of the workers and then of the drivers as well has to be a priority. Is, but this is kind of a silly question. I'm going to ask, because I'm not a constructional engineer. Would it be possible to open up one direction in traffic on the bridge while it's still be, the other side is still being worked on?
Yeah, so.
To shorten up that time and move it up from April 6 or 7?
That would be at the recommendation of our structural engineer. And if they had come up with the idea that we can do portions of the work and then open traffic flow, that would be something to consider. But we also have to work with our contractors to see, you know, if that traffic flow would impact their safety. And then also the accessibility underneath the bridge because there are going to be some cranes leaning over the side for the repair work on the columns. And so we don't want to impede that work and then cause an unsafe situation because there's only two 12-foot travel lanes on top of the bridge with the 10-foot shoulders. So something we will definitely consider to bring traffic sooner than later. But it would be at the recommendation of the structural engineer plus the input from the contractors as well.
And we already spoke to the contractor, Councilman Klein, and he was hesitant, his firm's hesitant to open up any portions of it as they do work for the safety of the worker and then the motorists as well.
Right.
But well, as Ernesto said, the structural engineer is working day by day and side by side of the contractor. And just like we extended the timeframe to the April timeframe, we can reduce it. So we're not saying we're just going to do, you know, So we're not saying we're just gonna do, you know, we're gonna work in this vacuum, so if we can open it sooner, or lane sections of it, uh, we will.
Right.
Yes, sir. And, and just let me explain that the, the, you know, we could say nothing to the community, just say we're gonna open it whenever we can, but that's part of being transparent, is that things unfold. So the three days was when we thought we could fix it ourselves. We couldn't, so then we had to bring in a professional, and they gave us a thirty-day timeframe. And then instead of just stopping there, we said, you know what, it's probably good that we look at the entire bridge one more time. We could've not done that, so that we didn't have a changing story, but, uh, by bringing in a, somebody to check the structural integrity of the pylons, that turned it into the three-month. So it's not as if, uh, we just don't know what we're doing, it's that we wanna, it's incremental, uh, and we wanna make sure we're protecting the safety of the motorists and then the workers there as well.
Right. So, uh, obviously, the premium is to, is to get the bridge opened. Um, is there been any thought about trying to examine, um, the cause of the structural deficiencies? I mean, is it just natural occurrences, or is it something unusual?
No. It's, uh, the bridge was designed, uh, on the cheap, so to speak. Uh, the, that body of water was, years ago, was predominantly fresh water, but over time, with the, uh, tidal influences, uh, the Barney Davis Plant that recycles water across the Laguna Madre, a lot of salt water is actually there. Uh, the tides are higher, the, the forces of the water are higher, and the bridge wasn't built, frankly, for that type of environment. Those are the reasons. And it's old, it was built in the eighties. Uh, the, if you just look at the embankments alone, it was built with what they call an articulated mat, meaning they just put down a mat on the, on the dirt to hold up the embankment, in a high-velocity channel area, which is on the cheap. They really should've had, what we're doing right now is putting walls, columns, like you see if you travel on I thirty, uh, seven, uh, or anywhere where there's a bridge, usually there's some type of a concrete embankment that did not exist there. Um, so, uh, the new bridge, though, will have better structural integrity, better, uh, can, uh, better handle the conditions of salt water and velocity of water. Yes, sir.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Ernie, thank you very much, and I just wanna personally thank you, because you picked up the phone and you were proactive in calling text dot to forward, fast-forward the replacement of the bridge that had ironically just been scheduled. So thank you for that. That, that's a huge, to your point, being preemptive.
During the holidays too, you know?
Yeah, well, during the holidays, everything you did, right. Those are things, and I think, I don't, I'm not sure if it was Councilman Pusley or somebody brought up, that we, we do need to make point of the things that we are doing that are proactive, and, and they are in the name of expediting, so that, you know, people's quality of life are not affected, you know, as much as possible. I mean, it has to be done. This is a, it's kinda like a street, it's bittersweet, but we've gotta have it done. It does take time, good work is gonna take time, um, and I'm just, I'm grateful for your actions in terms of the replacement of that bridge being moved up. That's huge, when you're talking about text dot. So thank you very much for, for this briefing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, and Mayor, there's just one final thing in the city manager report, and we did, and it looks like the audience has gone, but, uh, we do care about social justice. In fact, Mayor, when you were at-large council member, many council members, Roy and several here, uh, for the first time in the city's history, made Martin Luther King a city holiday. And because we care about social justice, so the Martin Luther King Thirty-seventh Annual Commemorative March is this Monday, and, uh, but events begin actually Thursday, and Nikila is here, she spoke just before the break, but Nikila, can you come on up? Nikila Pradye, Pradye is, uh, president of the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter for the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Who have been keeping this alive in our community, even though the city back in the day didn't recognize it as a holiday, we do now. Uh, one other thing, and I'm gonna turn it over to Nikila, is the march will begin at City Hall this year, and we plan on, uh, expanding the event ceremonies, and we want a lot of people there to march. Uh, it's a short walk march, maybe a half hour or so, so... Nikila, we'll turn it over to you to give us the updates. This is, by the way, we sent every one of these events to the mayor and council individually.
Right.
And each event is individual on your calendars, so you can see all the events beginning Thursday.
Thank you, City Managers Anoni, really appreciate it. Uh, again, I'm Nikila Pradye, president of the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Um, I really wanna thank the city, uh, for their partnership in getting our events going this year. We're very excited, um, to, uh, have the march, uh, come from City Hall, which it had done in years past. I mean, thirty-seven years is a long time, right? So it has a lot of history of its starting point and ending point, um, so we're happy to bring the program back to City Hall. Quickly, I just want to go over, uh, some of the events that are gonna be going on culminating with the march on Monday. So, um, our program, uh, from our chapter, start on Thursday, as, uh, City Managers Anoni mentioned. Uh, we're gonna have a virtual social justice forum, so because of convenience, we hope to have as many people join us as possible on that. Uh, we're gonna have experts from around the nation in law and education and justice to speak on the topic of the scales of justice, are they balanced or broken? Um, that'll start at six o'clock local time, so we hope people can join us for that. Um, skipping ahead, just to stay consistent with the programs that are officially coming from our chapter and our sorority, on Sunday, we'll host an interfaith prayer service, that's gonna be at Brooks Worship Center on North Port. Uh, that starts at six o'clock. That is also gonna be livestreamed on Facebook on the Brooks Worship Center page. And then on Monday, uh, things shift here to City Hall. Um, our partner, YWCA, is gonna host its racial justice forum at ten o'clock, um, on the sixth floor here at City Hall, and then after that, we're gonna move outside of City Hall, uh, to commence with the march. We'll have a short program starting at eleven thirty, and the annual MLK Commemorative March will, um, leave from City Hall at noon and go to the Church of the Good Shepherd. These programs cannot exist without strong partnership and alliances from leaders across our community, whether they be faith, uh, faith leaders, civic leaders, government leaders, so we really appreciate everybody's partnership, uh, and support in this. Um, and we really look forward to having everybody there. It's a very significant year in that we're celebrating the sixtieth anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. And so you'll find through all of these programs that these themes and topics that are gonna be covered are very consistent to a lot of the things that he talked about in that speech, and parts of his legacy that frankly, we need to keep alive, and unfortunately, are still very relevant, uh, even in twenty twenty-three. Um, so, uh, again, we, we thank the City Manager's Office, um, and the different departments here who have supported us in getting the word out, and, uh, we, we really just wanna encourage everybody to come out and either, um, you know, figure out what your place in furthering and advancing the legacy of Dr. King will be, or if you're not very familiar, learning some information about his legacy, and then figuring out what your part is in advancing that cause. And, um, as City Managers Anoni stated, uh, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is committed to continuing to keep that legacy alive here in Corpus Christi, so thank you.
Thank you. I would also add that the city of Corpus Christi has a table for the gala, and I think that email was sent out to invite everyone. I will also be reading a proclamation at that, so yes.
Yes, and I could add quickly, yes, um, so there are a couple of other events from other organizations that will happen on Saturday. So starting at nine o'clock in the morning, the Black Chamber of Commerce here is gonna host a prayer breakfast business mixer at Emerald Beach Hotel. That'll start at nine o'clock in the morning. And then, as Mayor Guajardo just, uh, alluded to, the NAACP is gonna host its Freedom Fund Gala on Saturday evening at the Ortiz Center. That starts at six thirty, and that is an event, um, that's done every year during MLK holiday weekend by NAACP. So, uh, no shortage of events to go to and to support, and we really hope our community gets behind this important cause.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
May I just say one, one other thing? I am so honored to be asked to be the call-to-action, uh, person. I've been doing the MLK march for more years than I wanna say, but, um, to be part of that is just amazing, and, and yes, I will bring my peace flag, Michael. I hope you'll be marching with me as well.
We, we marched a good mile or two last time, didn't we?
We appreciate it, Councilwoman.
Bin was too fast for us, so we, we walked kinda more towards the middle.
Okay, well, we still expect to see you there, Councilman.
Yes, ma'am. Hey, twelve years strong, right here.
Absolutely.
Church of the Good Shepherd.
You were there last year.
Family who helped start the MLK watch.
There you go.
With the sorority.
There you go. No, we definitely appreciate everybody's support and look forward to seeing you guys this weekend and on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Campleson, Mr. Pusley, do you, are your lights, is your light on? I mean, it is on, but...
It was.
Now I've forgotten what I was gonna say.
Well, I mean, you did...
It was during the Flint Hills, uh, presentation, right?
Okay, you just spoke. I thought it was because you just spoke.
No, but, uh, are we down with the Flint Hills, or?
Yes, we are.
Alright.
Thank you.
I missed it.
Mr. Pusley, if you'll turn your light off, please. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Peter, with respect to the, the march, and I know this came up, uh, in past years, um, are, are we gonna provide, you know, it used to start at the county courthouse, and now it's gonna start here at City Hall, but are we gonna, for those who wanna participate, who are handicapped or unable to walk, are, are we providing any way for them to be transported through, to the church, or, has that ever been discussed?
I'm not sure if it, I know Sony is, uh, representing us and meets with the team every week. I'll, let me find out, and I'll let the entire council know.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe a couple...
The roads are closed, though, so there's, there's ample space. Uh, the roadway is closed, uh, so, uh, persons...
Maybe a couple of golf carts or something of that nature.
Right, okay, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
And the origination point, just again, is at City Hall, will be right outside the chambers, on the Staples side.
Oh, on the Staples side, not the front?
Uh, well, the, there's, where the council comes into the, the City Hall here, will be there on this corner, uh, Staples and Leopard, because it's a little bit of a plaza there, so we, right, there'll be some speeches and stuff made there.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll look into that transportation, that's a good question, Councilman Pusley, and I'll let the council know.
Okay, so that concludes your report.
It does conclude the report, yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. So what I'm gonna do, Rebecca, I'm gonna skip over, I know we have a couple of people in the audience who are, uh, waiting on some agendas, I'm sorry, and some items. I'm gonna go to the consent agenda, items eight through eight, eight through nineteen, we're gonna pass that. If anyone has anything to pull, we'll come back and address those items. So at this time, uh, council members, uh, would anyone like to pull any, uh, consent agenda items between items eight through nineteen?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item sixteen.
Item number sixteen.
Twelve, twelve and thirteen.
Item number twelve, item number thirteen. Anyone else?
Mayor, item number fourteen, please.
Item number fourteen. Anything else? Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull, uh, fifteen.
Item number fifteen. Okay, then I am going to move, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of items, uh, number sixteen, number twelve, number thirteen, number fourteen, and number fifteen.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, so we are gonna come back to those items specified and, um, discuss or, or ask those questions, uh, but right now, we're gonna go to, back to section G, and we are gonna go to number, item number four, mayoral appointments to audit committee and municipal court. Uh, do we, we, what do we have for that? Rebecca, just vote on that?
Well, this one doesn't require a vote, it's just for, uh, public notification. Um, so per the city code, the mayor, uh, makes appointments to the four, uh, to the municipal court committee and the audit committee, and she also appoints the chair. So her appointments are as follows. For the audit committee, the chair is Gil Hernandez. The members are council members Jim Klein, Everett Roy, and Dan Suckley. For the municipal court committee, the chair is, uh, council member Roland Barrera. The council members are Sylvia Campos, Michael Hunter, and Mike Pusley.
Okay, great, so then we'll just move on to item number five.
Can we say no to that one?
No, you can't.
No, you're in.
Okay.
Either that, you wanna be chair.
No, I don't wanna be chair.
Item number, uh, number five is a motion appointing Mayor Paulette M. Guajardo and council members Roland Barrera, Gil Hernandez, Michael Hunter, Mike Pusley, Jim Klein, Everett Roy, Sylvia Camples, and Dan Suckley as the Board of Directors of the Corpus Christi Housing Finance Corporation and the Corpus Christi Industrial Development Corporation.
Mayor, move for approval.
Aye, again.
Okay, do we have further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number six is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four mayor pro temp service schedule.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. I'd also like to thank, uh, Sarah Morgan, who's in the back along with Kim, um, who, Doc Seth, who are very active, obviously, Sarah, you are, but I know you were here for item number seventeen, which has passed, and that is a partnership that we have, a very strong partnership that we have with the, um, the, uh, museum, with the museum. So thank you for all that you do for the museum. It is, is noted. Obviously, we believe in you and, and we appreciate the partnership, and thank you for being here as well. Okay, moving on, section number H, uh, that is our board and committee appointments, the Reinvestment Zone Downtown Board. So what are we doing there, Rebecca?
Yes, ma'am, we have one board for the council to consider. The, the Reinvestment Zone, number three, the Downtown Board, is meeting on January the twenty-fourth, so we do need to make the appointments today. So there are seven vacancies, and also we'll, um, ask the council to appoint the chairman for a one-year term beginning January first of twenty twenty-three. And historically, council members have been appointed to this board, so we would like to look at the reappointments first, and the members eligible for reappointment are Mayor Paulette Guajardo, council members Gil Hernandez, Roland Barrera, Michael Hunter, and Mike Pusley. So if we could entertain a motion to reappoint those, uh, members, it would be appreciated.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And then we need, uh, new appointments for our new council members, who are James Klein, Sylvia Campos, Dan Suckley, and Everett Roy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you. Oh, and the chairman, I'm sorry, that's also the other thing we need to do, is to...
I'd like to make a motion to have our District One council member, Everett Roy, be a chairman, and then another District One resident.
It's the other way around.
What did I say? Sorry.
No.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, in reverse. I'm, I'm sorry, I have the wrong location.
See.
Okay, so...
North Beach Downtown.
Right.
There we go.
So you're nominating?
Everett Roy be the chairman.
For chairman, okay.
Or...
And then for Everett Roy be the chairman for North Beach, Ters, and Councilman Pusley be the chair for...
North Beach Ters isn't on the agenda. We, we have...
It's just downtown this time.
Oh, we're just doing downtown this time?
This is downtown.
Yeah, I'm talking about the package.
Sorry, Councilman, I nominate, uh, Councilman Pusley as chair. Second.
And Councilman, uh, uh, Roy as vice chair.
Yes.
Okay, so...
For downtown.
Are you good with that, Michael?
I'm way, I'm way, uh, you know...
Yeah, there was a, are you gonna withdraw your motion?
Already done five different tours for North Beach, but yeah, that's what I want.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion, so Councilmember Barrera, you made a motion to appoint, um, Councilman Pusley as the chair, and then vice chair. I think the vice chair is actually, um, appointed by the committee itself. So Board of Directors elects the vice chairman, so you can do that at your first meeting and make you the vice chair once that board meets, but for now, the action is to appoint, uh, Councilmember Pusley.
Okay.
So...
Great, so we have a motion and a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, uh, when we return, we, we will, uh, go over items number sixteen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen from the consent agenda, and we will have a briefing on the operational update, uh, from the Art Museum of South Texas. So we're gonna go ahead and break for lunch, and we'll be back in thirty minutes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene our meeting and start back where we left off, which would be our consent agenda. We're gonna start with the items pulled, which were item number, items number 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Item number 12 is an ordinance authorizing a water arterial transmission grid main construction reimbursement agreement. Councilwoman Camples, did you have a question or comment on that one?
I guess I have a question. So, being you, this may sound stupid, but, so, when the developer asks, you know, for the money to reimburse, to, this is what we're paying, the 471, 488 million? I was just wondering, only because the developer went and did this work, and now we're, we're gonna go ahead and pay them, right? We're gonna pay them back for the transmission lines and-
Right, to install the line, and he has not done the work yet. That's part of the agreement.
I thought the work had already been done, and we're paying him, we're paying them.
No, he, he requests reimbursement, he needs to get that approved by this body, and then he does the work. The work is done.
Okay. Well, I guess my, my, one of my questions, or the question was, I belong to an organization, and we had adopted a park, and we installed the irrigation drip system into the park. We paid for it ourselves, and there was no reimbursement from the city. So, my question is, would an organization be eligible to reimburse, to get reimbursed for doing something that will benefit the city? Is that something that you could answer? Do you have a?
I, in, in regards to this, anyone, or any organization, or any person, or developer who plots a piece of property in Neoces County, pays lot and acres fees, which populates the buckets, which are the trust fund buckets. So, anybody then can turn around and ask, hey, I need, I need assistance in running this water infrastructure, or this wastewater infrastructure to my new development, you know, somewhere within the city, so.
Okay.
And what you just specifically said, I, I really don't know. Maybe Miles can answer.
Right, because your, your expertise is with developmental services. I'm, I'm talking about, or I'm asking about a park, the, a city-owned park, that citizens use their own money, which is like about $2,200. And I'm just asking, if the, if a developer can't get money reimbursed for doing, you know, providing lines and all that, why can't that also be applied to residents or to organizations?
And, and Ms. Camples, I would say, right now on this agenda, your question must be related to this item, because you pulled the item. So, what you're inquiring about is something that I would sit with the city manager and go over. That, that would be more appropriate, and you would have a lot more information given to you, like you said, in, in regards to parks and not this particular item.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like to make a motion to?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve item as-
As written, okay.
As written, sorry, yes.
Yes, ma'am. No, that's fine. We have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. And Mr. Zanoni, I'm sure you took note, she has concern in, in terms of agreements, reimbursements, but to do with parks.
Well, I'll meet, I'll meet with you, councilwoman.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number 13, Ms. Camples, you all shall pull this one. This is a motion authorizing a three-year service agreement with Miller Environmental Services for an amount not to exceed $136,900 for emergency spill response and remediation services for the Public Works Department.
The only question that I have, Mayor, is, who was the company before Miller Environmental Services? Did we have a contract?
Ernie Delgarza, Director of Public Works, and Gabriel Nohosa, Assistant Director, he can answer that question.
Gabriel Nohosa, Assistant Director of Public Works. Yes, ma'am, it was Miller Environmental was the, the last contractor.
Okay, is that the only environmental service company that we utilize here in the area? I'm just wondering.
I think it was, it was procured through the bidding, through contracts and procurement. I believe we received two bids. Miller Environmental was the, the low bid in this situation.
Yeah, councilwoman, the, the second bidder was Gainco Inc., Inc. in Portland, Texas. So, there's a few, like Flint Hills uses several different ones, but there's Miller and Corpus Christi, and then Gainco in Portland, Texas.
Okay, I, I just didn't know if we just have always, not always, but we've been basically using Miller Environmental Services?
We go through the procurement process every year, so this is a three, a three-year contract, so after this one, we'll go out for bid again and go through that process again. So, it, it just whoever bids on the product, on the service agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Oh, yes, please. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance, is it 13?
Number 13, yes.
Okay.
Okay, great, do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Klein?
Yeah, I just had a, had a quick question about this. The, the amount here, 136,000, I mean, in grand scheme of things, this is not that much, given the, the size of our budget, but I assume that this is all gonna eventually come from taxpayers, or is there, if there's a company that, that is perpetrator of a spill, are they bearing any of the cost of this, or is it just all on the, on the rate payers, taxpayers?
So, the, if it is an unknown customer, just say, you know, someone dumped some barrels in the ditch, we call on Miller to come and do hazardous cleanup, but if it is a known resident or commercial development or anything like that, we do, they do bill that, that person or that entity, and also, we do have the ability to place liens on properties.
Good, thank you, thank you.
And Councilman Klein, the 136, $136,000 contract is an up-to amount, and if used, so if we don't use them in three years, we don't pay them anything. Yes, sir, so it's not a flat payment, it's based on services rendered. Yes, sir?
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 14 was pulled by Councilman Hernandez. It's a motion authorizing a one-year service agreement with Viking Painting of La Vista, Nebraska to paint Corpus Christi Waters' new logo on four water storage tanks. Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna do this when we repaint the, the tower, not as a separate item, so we're just, this is just beautification, right?
Councilman, the Coral Vine tank is, has just been painted, the logo is gonna go with it, the Holly, Rand Morgan, and the Staples tank, as you very well know, are all in existence. The Flower Bluff tank is gonna be painted when, with construction of that project, and then we've got, the Morgan tank is gonna be demolished, the Alameda tank and Galahad tank logo will be added when they are repainted.
Okay, but these particular ones that are on this particular item are just to paint the logo, not to do any other painting or preservation or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, would you like to make a motion? Mr. Klein, do you have a question? No, yes, that's fine. Would you like to make a motion?
Actually, I'm gonna vote no on this, so I'm not gonna make a motion.
Okay, is, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Say no. The motion carries. Item number 15, pulled by Councilman Roy, is a motion authorizing the purchase of an additional new playground unit at West Guth Park.
Good afternoon, my name is Mayor, and Councilman. This is a motion to authorize the purchase of a playground with a fabric shade structure and a three-bay swing set, an attached fabric shade structure for West Guth Park. The equipment purchase is through Cunningham Recreation Game Time.
Okay, Councilman Roy?
I'm sorry.
That's your fine.
So, my question on this is that Councilman Pusley and myself just met last night with the school district of Tulsa Midway, which is adjacent, butts right up against West Guth. And, so I have two questions, I guess. How was this, who requested the equipment, and how was it determined in terms of this is what they needed? Was it, as far as the type of equipment?
It's determined by Parks and Recreation Department. The type of equipment is like equipment that goes throughout the city.
Yeah, Councilman, can I add to that? So, this is, this has been vetted through the community, through the Parks Board, through the prior council. It was included in the 2020 bond program.
Okay.
And it's replacing an existing dilapidated structure that was there, that's been removed.
So, that's what I'm, okay.
Right, it's not, it's, it's replacing unsafe hazardous playground that, if it hasn't been, it's gonna be removed, and this is kind of a like-for-like. It's also consistent with the 10-year Parks Master Plan, where the, the residents and quite a few participated. These are some of the items they asked for in all parks, playground equipment, things to do in the parks.
All right, I, I kinda wanted to know the origin of that, because there's a request that they have going forward for some additional, an additional item, but I'll worry about that later, and, and, and work with, you know, the city manager, or, you know.
The Parks Director.
To, to talk about that.
Yes, sir.
But I was just wondering how much leeway we had on that, before we spent that money, to see if we could possibly do both, but thank you for your explanation. So, I have no other questions, so.
I just wanna add, you know, I think, I know you just said that we've vetted, but I know there's, there's several projects that we've discussed that are in my district, where it just seems like if we have some community stakeholders, we just need to ensure that we talk to them. And, because, that's the thing, you have a situation like this, I mean, I know the Rotary Club had been wanting to make several improvements out there for the longest time, and then they, they went through the process, I guess, four Parks Directors ago.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, four Parks Directors ago, and then when, when, I think, then, then we had somebody that came on and said, no, that, that a piece of equipment was unsafe.
Right.
So, I, I just think that there just needs to be a process where we, we talk to the stakeholders in the area.
I've, I've been working with them, I've implemented another-
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add it on, that's all. Just, just to make sure it's a-
Yeah, we have, though.
There, there should be, this has been brought up, and I even talked about, is the park one that needs to be repurposed, because it isn't so much for children anymore, you know, and it's an older neighborhood, or what have you, to your point. Is there a process, then?
There is, yes, so the, there's several processes, or processes, I'm not sure of the word, but the, when we did the 10-year Parks Master Plan, people from across the community were engaged, and, and so we make decisions based on that. Also, we worked with the neighborhood groups around there. This is consistent with what people use there today. It's, there's playground equipment there today that's no longer useful, and people use it, they're trying to use it, they're, they're saying, where's, when is the new equipment coming in to replace this?
Yep, just so I clarify, this isn't the community asking to take away equipment, they're probably fine with replacing the outdated equipment, they were just looking for some additional assistance, the school.
Right, we can meet with the school for the next bond.
Using that facility over there, and I just wondered if, you know.
Yeah.
If we had a little bit of money, could we accommodate both? But I, we can talk about that later.
Right, that's good to know, Councilman Roy, so, 'cause the budget's coming up, the 2024 budget, so we can have those dialogues through, you, Councilman.
Councilman Roy.
Yeah, and, and things change in a master plan. I mean, we do those, and then, you know, it's a different segment, and then sometimes it's not the neighbors, because we're doing a master plan for a region, not my backyard. I mean, I had somebody get upset, that said, you know, "But it hasn't done anything in the West Haven Street." "Oh, we're doing a park right, right in front of you, we're doing a splash pad right there." And, you know- And, you know, we came up with the idea, and, and I'm guilty of it too, I'm just saying that. Whatever the case is, I just wanted to add that on.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, um, in, in looking at this, it would've been helpful if you would've included this was done in compliance with the ten-year master plan, or some sort of process, you could say, uh, and was approved by the Parks and Advisory Committee. I don't see any language to that effect. So if, if you have a process, please include it in there.
Right, I'm reading the memo right now, it says, "Enhancing West Guth Park is in line with the ten-year Parks Master Plan." That's on the second page of the briefing memo.
I'm sorry, I didn't read that in there.
Uh-huh.
Says ages five to twelve years, three-bay swing, playgrounds collected existing.
Enhancing, right, enhancing the park is in line with the ten-year.
Equipment, ten to twelve weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
It's on the last paragraph.
Okay, enhancing the ten-year master plan, but is there anything that is specific to that park as to what that is in the master plan?
Yes, the playground equipment.
No, no, like, for example, the master plan dis- describes what type of park it is and what type of amenities it should have, right? So that particular park should have this particular amenity based on the master plan. So that's kinda what I was referring to, is it, you, it's gotta be in accordance with what the master plan says the amenities need to be. Does it need to be for a, a larger playground equipment for older kids? Does it need to be for those with disabilities? That, you know, there, there's things within that, within the master plan, that describes what it is, right, or what requirements should be there. Right, it's not just, needs a playground. Right, so, and the other thing is, you have this from Omnia, what is this? Omnia Partners Cooperative, which is kind of like a byboard, right? Where, where's Josh? Josh, we talked about this earlier. And there are, there are a lot of byboards, or I'm using a ubiquitous term, that describes these cooperatives that you buy stuff from. So we probably should have a list of what those other companies were that we looked at, so it doesn't look like we're just sole sourcing this, right? So we could see exactly how much that, that type of playground equipment costs at other of these cooperatives, so that we could see that you've, and, and give you credit for going through that process and looking at all that, that financial information, saying, yes, we got the best deal. Right here, it doesn't look that way. So, uh, I think it's just, I, I think you went through the right processes. I just think you need to provide more information in terms of allowing us to make that better decision. And I, and like I said, we talked about it, you know, and, and, you know, I, but I wanted to bring that up so you can have some feedback as to how to best give us the best information. Yeah, we will work on our packaging.
That's a good idea, to include those.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, just real quickly, going, going back to something that Councilman Barrera said. Peter, again, it, it, some of this is example of what I was talking about this morning. We have to learn how to market ourself better than we do.
Right.
We have to let the public know the good things that we're doing in some of these places, uh, in the districts, and, you know, throughout the city of Corpus Christi. We do so many good things, and it, you never hear about it. And, you know, uh, as these new council members will soon find out, you can walk down this, any street in Corpus Christi and stop anybody, and they're mad at the city about something.
Yeah.
So, and just pick a subject, and they're mad about it.
Right.
So, we need to start letting the public know what it is we're doing, and the positive things we're doing. And I don't, I don't, I'm not a marketing specialist, so I'm not here to tell you how to do that.
Right.
But we have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, yeah, Councilman, we're glad you support that, 'cause we just hired, as you know, a new communications director, and we just brought in a, a new team member for the first time ever with the title of a marketing, she's a marketing specialist. We recognize that as well, and I know you've talked about it in prior council meetings. You're right, we try right now through the media, we do, I don't know how many media releases every meeting, but maybe one in twelve get covered. So our marketing specialist that we just hired, that's, her job is that, is to help us get these words out to the community through other venues, social media, direct links to neighborhoods, and so on. So we're working on it. Yeah, thank you for supporting it.
Okay.
I move for approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Uh, the motion carries. Councilman Pusley, your light's on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Okay, and let's see, our last item pulled.
Thank you.
Is item number, what item was it?
Sixteen.
That was sixteen? Oh, we're on sixteen, yeah. Motion authorizing a professional services contract with CPNY, Inc., San Antonio, Texas, to provide a thirty percent preliminary engineering report for the Owen Stevens Water Plant Pump Station improvements. Councilman Barteta, you pulled this one?
Yes, Mayor, and thank you very much. And, and my question was more so on the procurement, and, 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 you know, I've, I've been echoing this for, for two years now about, you know, when, especially in a project this size. And I know in engineering, you know, it's, 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 there's an issue about local preference, that, that we can't, but, but then I see something like this, and I guess that's the thing. On the, what was available in the packet, and, I mean, I'm an electronic guy, don't wanna kill any trees, okay? So, oh, Sylvia's got a book over there. Anyway.
As the print shop supervisor, I can thank you for that.
So, um, I, I'm having a hard time understanding this. I see, like, at, at least on, online, like, page six, and, and it, it just has a whole bunch of numbers, and it says committee member. And, and then it, it talks about the, the interviews, and those are the interviews that I say that are more, I guess, subjective, not objective, so.
Councilmember, I will work, uh, to, to, to try to answer this if.
Yes, please.
Uh, Mayor and Council, thank you for, uh, this afternoon, and congratulations to our new members. Um, so with the technical evaluation and the interview evaluation, um, this is part of a mass RFQ, and so that's something new in the past two years that we've implemented under Peter's leadership, in which the city tries to do, uh, a very large solicitation with multiple project awards with inside of it. And, uh, the packaging for the information we provided you is, is, is not as adequate as I would've liked, and so we'll work on beefing that up. But essentially, we transitioned to a ranking system in this mass RFQ scoring. So the, uh, committee members rank on a scale of zero to four. And, uh, and, and then the points allocated per section are then multiplied by either the four, you get a hundred percent, three, you get seventy-five percent, of, of whatever that point allocation for that mark is. And so I'll do a better job packaging that moving forward for you. But basically, this is a ranking system, and so uh, I will tell you, there are multiple projects under the stormwater and water wastewater, uh, section that are gonna be awarded, so even though Ardura might not get work here, I can tell you that they do have some work coming in the form of a project that's gonna be coming to you guys later.
Okay, well then, I, I guess I might wanna, and, and I said last time we have to visit, so, because I, I'm, I'm, I guess I didn't understand, when I asked you in the back, I wanted to prepare you a little bit, 'cause I didn't wanna beat you up the way I have been.
I appreciate that.
And then, uh, it, it's, when I heard ranking system, I thought maybe, you know, I've always been the type that, uh, you can see a lot of times when we assess points, you know, like we say, um, we're gonna give five points because we think they're, you know, I, I've made the joke with my friend to the, my right now. Is that, uh, Jesus Christ would not get a ten if ten was the highest number, if Gil or Nantes were scoring it. God might get a nine.
God.
That's new.
And, yeah, Mary might get a seven. So, that's a, that's the whole thing. But if, if you put him in a corner and said, I've got Jesus Christ, God, and Mary, and I've gotta assign one, two, or three, then that tells him he's gotta make a decision. Versus giving some, you get to a, that's my thing. If you say it's based on a percentage, then it's just based on my opinion. Because what I might think is a hundred percent, uh, Councilman Roy might think is seventy percent.
So, we, we break down the criteria into components, right? So like, uh, for instance, the experience on similar, uh, projects of size and scope and similarity, right? And so, based off of the, the, um, I'm sorry, based off of their proposal, we'll look at that, and they'll provide us that scope of, you know, we, we can't use our outside knowledge on something, so even if they have, that's, that's part of the way the, the state guidelines are, where, you know, even though we might know a firm has done tons of work, if they don't list that as the, the referenced work here, we can't include that as the objective analysis of the criteria asked for. And so that's why sometimes you have, and, and it also has to do with the teams that are, you know, we may have nationally ranked amazing firms who give us their B-team or their C-team. And so sometimes those scores may not look like their work, because we recognize the members who are actually gonna be doing the, the work on the ground, and we know that they're not their A-game team.
Based on their proposal.
Correct, based off of the, or the interview, correct. And those are the kinds of questions we ask. So, that, you know, uh, we do our best to be as objective about it as possible, and that's the other reason we moved to the ranking system, is to kinda pull out that, uh, ambiguity behind what quant, what quantifies ten points versus four points. Uh, now you're, you're, do they wholly meet the criteria, and there's a, the grading rubric that goes along with it, that do they wholly meet the criteria? Do they mostly meet it, with minor modifications? Do they, you know, almost meet it with modifications, they could meet it, or do they not meet it at all? And that's the, the.
Okay, well, we can talk about that. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the contract. I just want you, I, I guess, and once again, I feel that the challenge, and I've, and I've called you up more times than I care to admit, uh, but, you know, I, I, I think, uh, that, that's something that I, I, we, we can touch base on, I don't wanna waste everybody else's time. So with that, Mayor, I move for approval.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, Councilman Hernandez, yes.
Yes. Couldn't let that passive-aggressive attack go, right?
It wasn't an attack, it's a term of endearment.
Come on, Jesus is a seven, come on.
Mary, Mary.
If it was engineered, it'd be one.
Uh, no, it's, it, it's funny, I'm the one that, my, uh, opening speech referred to a prayer in God, and I get the, I get this.
Okay, let's move it along, let's move it along, please.
Okay, I, I, sorry, I had to throw that in there.
I know.
Help me understand this, is Ardura a subcontractor for CPNY?
They do subcontracting, subcontracting work. I don't know if in this specific proposal they are, I can tell you that they are subcontractor for a couple of other companies that are competing for other wastewater water.
A lot of the Owen Stevens work, they are sub to Hazen and Sawyer. I, I don't believe they're involved with this particular study.
Okay, so this is, well, maybe you can get that answered at a later time, find out.
I mean, we, they're, they're not.
He confirmed that.
Yeah, they're not involved in this, in this one.
On, on this one, no.
Right, and this, 'cause there's a contract that's with this item, and the, the contract specifically states it's with CPNY, and they have no subconsultant, Ardura.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, so on this particular item. Now, I know we've had this conversation, it's probably one of the few areas me and, uh, my passive-aggressive councilmember over there uh, agree on is the subjectivity of these kind of selection processes for professional services. I don't know how you take that out, considering how the state law is. But I, I think you need to look at somehow we can get the transparency, because, you know, when I saw that they had scored a hundred on this process, you know, and it's kinda reminded me of how, um, Saddam Hussein got elected with a hundred percent of the vote in Iraq, and it always gives you kind of a pause, it's just like, okay, what if I won the election by a hundred percent? Would everybody say, hey, he's the best thing since sliced bread? No, not quite. Right, there's always something. Uh, so it, you know, when, it, so when somebody gets a hundred percent, it makes you question it. Uh, so tell me, how did they get to a hundred percent?
Well, they met all of the objective criteria. You know, that, without modification, their proposal spoke to all of the different components outlined.
Including the, uh, the interview?
Including the interview, yes. Which is, again, supplemental to reaffirming all of the information provided in their original written proposal.
And I think it might help, um, to explain a little bit, uh, you know, they have been involved in this area. And you may recall, this is the company that came in and helped us with the issue that we had with the elevated storage tanks, and.
I, I remember, I remember.
So, so they have some familiarity with the distribution system, and, uh, with some of the hydraulic issues that we've experienced.
You say that, but I also know Ardura has worked a lot, uh, for, on a lot of projects at Owen Stevens, right? I'm sorry, can you hear me? I know Ardura's, has worked a lot of projects at Owen Stevens, and I would imagine is just as familiar with our uh, infrastructure as, as this company. So, that's what I said, it just, it seems unusual to have one company get a hundred. Uh, I don't know of any company that, that can score like that, but.
Well, again, it's not an individual point allocation, so if they meet the criteria, you give them a four, and they completely met the criteria, and that's just the way the points ring in, okay?
I'm just, I'm giving you the perspective of what it looks like here, okay?
Understood.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying it looks what it appears to be. So, uh, I, I, you know, like I said, I'm not sure how you make it better. Because at least, you know, it's, it's, we're in agreement that there's such, there's so much subjectivity in some of these things, that it's hard for us to say, yes, this is the right one. So I, I will leave it at that, but you, I mean, and we've had this discussion, we just had it this morning, about how some of these things appear. And it, you know, you know, it doesn't help that this company's from San Antonio, Peter's from San Antonio, you know, and, and, and Peter, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not accusing, I'm not accusing you of anything.
I don't know the company.
I, I'm not accusing.
I was not in the valuation process, yeah, just so.
Peter, I, I think you're, you're missing a point though.
But, no, Councilman, but you're making the statement, and that infers it, so.
I'm making the sa, because it's not, it's not just me thinking that, right? You, you know, we had a, we had a situation with an architect that was gonna do the, the Development Services building, that had a similar situation, right? I, I, I'm just saying.
No, you didn't.
Peter, I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything like that, okay? Uh, just the optics. And I want you to make sure that, I want you to understand what we're looking at, and how, you know, what we have to defend, or how we have to, how this comes about, okay? Try to, and I don't know, like I said, I don't know how we make this more, uh, fair and impartial, and not have the appearance of not being unfair and partial, but.
Right, and Councilman, can I add to that?
Yeah, just to the techn, and Jeff should probably, or Wes, or anybody really, so this, um, this company CPNY is, the one reason they were probably selected, even though I wasn't part of the panel, is that they know a lot about water distribution systems, and, and the engineering feat that goes around a system. Uh, Ardura arguably has millions of dollars of work with the city, millions and millions, at Owen Stevens, at our wastewater treatment plants. This company knows more, I think, about distribution methods and systems. One of the points that's getting missed here is these two tanks that were built at taxpayer expense have been not used for over four years. And so with Mike Murphy and team, they're saying this is kind of a waste of taxpayer money, these things should be brought back online to help, uh, when we have pressure issues like we did in, in the winter event that just happened around Christmas time. So this is a good news story, and that it brings back into, into service taxpayer money-funded infrastructure that's been offline for over four years.
Mm-hmm.
So our, so this company CPNY knows a lot, uh, knows more, I think, about distribution systems and the science behind it. I think that's one of the reasons they were selected.
Okay, and Peter, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, it's, uh, this is not on this individual item. It, it's a broader perspective on some of the arguments we've had on this, on this particular.
I agree with you on those, yeah. I would, I would have, just what I said, I would say regardless of what you had said, and so just, I, I hear you, and you're right. We're gonna work with Josh and the team to address some of these issues, all of them that you just talked about.
Okay.
I did wanna point that out, that just to, just so the council and the communities clear, and other contractors that didn't get this job, is that this is more than fixing something, it's, it's analyzing the distribution system, and saying, these two tanks that were built at a high cost to the rate payer, that have been offline for over four years, how can we bring them back in service? They should be back in service. And so this, this company that helped us, by the way, figure out how to bring the two water towers in service that had been built and couldn't use 'cause of pressure issues, it's the same company that studied that system, and alerted us to the fact that instead of spending three million annually on pipe replacement, we need to be spending thirty million. Same company. Yes, sir.
Right, and, you know, we all know the history of that, so, well, not all of us, but. All right, thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Well, I thought I'd get out of this unscathed, but now you've piqued my interest. Okay, so, in the management of this water distribution system, who made a decision not to utilize these two tanks?
No, the, nobody's, the people that did aren't here anymore, nobody's there. Yeah.
Had to send a posse out.
Right, it would've been, you know, then, Mark Van Vleek, Dan Grimsbo, Kevin, yeah, they're not here, that's why they're not here.
That's why they're not here, okay. Okay, I just thought I'd ask, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Hunter. Okay. Uh, well, he does have his light on, so let's, uh, give him a minute while he's choking in the back. He just said I'm choking.
Somebody need to check on him?
I'm gonna let him choke, come, maybe we should check on him.
Here, here, Peter, just for the record.
No, you're fine.
The guys, the, the majority of the guys from Ardura are from Corpus, and I'm from Corpus.
I'm from Corpus too. Yeah, I live here.
There you go, there you go.
Yes, yeah, I'm from, I haven't been to San Antonio in four years, so.
There you go.
Right.
That was a legacy ago.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I apologize, uh, left my stirring straw in my coffee cup, I'm having a little bit of trouble remembering what I was gonna say now, but, uh, I think, I mean, I've talked a lot. to a lot of people about this, I've talked to y'all about this, we need, I know you say that we can't do it because of the state, but we need something, and I have asked and looked, just because of our last conversation, if there is some opportunity to get us a little bit more favorable local preference. And it's going to be very difficult, but that is something that we have to look at the state level, unfortunately, we do have to follow those guidelines, so thank you for following them, but at the same time, we have citizens that struggle to see what's really going on, and just assume that maybe something that's happened in the past has continued again. So by you giving us some of the information that Councilman Hernandez is asking for, that gives us ammunition and a buffer to help us move things along, because as Dr. Klein says, things take too long at the city.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries, and that will take us over to Section N, our briefings, item number, excuse me, item number 20, and that is a briefing to City Council on the operational updates from the Art Museum of South Texas.
And while Sarah Morgan's coming up, the Executive Director, Councilman Pusly, asked, actually, I think it's several council members, but it was led by Councilman Pusly, that the City Council get briefings on our major art venues that the city owns, and in some case, or in most cases where you have a third-party operator. And so Sarah Morgan is going to talk today about the Art Museum of South Texas, that building is ours, it's a city facility, city asset. Soon we'll bring in the other operators, the Science Museum and the Art Center, I think, are already presented. Maybe, I think we moved that one.
We moved it.
Yeah, the Art Center Director, Ms. Blunser will come in as well, that's a city asset as well. So today is our first of three presentations, in this case, it's on the Art Center, just so the council can better understand the business that happens there, and the operating mechanics of it.
Great.
Yeah.
Art Museum of South Texas. Staffed by Texas A&amp;M, but the building itself is the city's.
Correct. Well, you know what, you're not alone, everyone is confused by that, kind of, we have a, I call it the stool, you know, we've got the Art Museum, and then we have the university, and we have the city, and so, you know, everyone's confused on that, but, so you're not alone, Councilman Hunter. Good afternoon, it's good to be here, I'm Sarah Morgan, I'm the Director of the Art Museum of South Texas, and I'm always happy to have an opportunity to come talk about what we're doing at the Art Museum. Let's see, there we go. So the first slide you're looking at, those are kind of four-year revenue expense for the Art Museum, and I went back to 2019, because I wanted you guys to see where we were pre-COVID. Ended 2019, and that, if you look at the far, the right-hand column at the bottom, those are our net increase or decrease at the end of the year. The numbers on the left are our revenue, the columns on the right are expenses. So we ended 2019 with a net increase of just under $360,000. 2020, we all know what happened then, it was a tough year, '21, we recovered, and then 2022, things are better, but what we ran into this year when we started, we created our budget in September of '21, and in the course of this year, we've had a lot of increases in cost, shipping, supplies, you know, rentals for events and things like that, so we did have a bit of a tough year there, just because of a lot of increases, like for exhibitions, the crating and the shipping tripled for most of those exhibitions. So, but, this is a good time for me to tell you that I'd like to publicly thank Kimberly Stockseth, who is our 2022 Board Chair, and her husband, Stephen. They graciously offered to match dollar for dollar everything we raised in our end-of-the-year annual appeal, and we raised $100,000. Those numbers are not reflected in here, because this goes through November, and so the Stockseth matched that amount with $100,000, so that was.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Those are kind of the gracious angels that we love having around, and some more of those, I want to publicly thank all of you for what you do to support the Art Museum of South Texas, the $350,000 that we received from you, and then this year, the $375,000, thank you for that increase. We really couldn't do what we do without that, and so we are very grateful for the support that you continue to give us. Moving on to our 2023 exhibition schedule, we will have about 15 exhibitions this year, six of those will be temporary exhibitions that are on loan to us from other institutions or from private lenders, so I'm just going to talk briefly about those. The first two that will open up on January 20th, Karen Broker, My Small Circus, and Blow Up Two: Inflatable Contemporary Art. Karen Broker is, she's the retired Chair of the Art Department at Rice University, she's from Pennsylvania, been, she was a professor of printmaking and drawing at Rice for 21 years before becoming the Chair of that department, and she loves to find objects, but not just find them, she likes to find people that actually have those objects and learn the story about them, and then she puts them into kind of, takes the history that those objects have and gives them a new history, and she feels like it kind of is an ode to a moment in time while keeping that moment alive. And so she creates these, with this exhibition, she's created this series of almost doll-like figures with discarded ceramic dolls or cast iron dolls, and then she just absolutely encrust them with all of these kind of wired-on other objects. So they're pretty spectacular, they're pretty, there's a lot of humor involved in there, and Karen will actually be coming and speaking for one of our Lunch and Mugs programs on the day the exhibition opens, on January 20th. And then the opening with that will be Blow Up Two: Inflatable Contemporary Art. So we, you know, we just got through with the Christmas season, and everyone has those giant Santa Clauses and peanuts in their front yard, this is essentially what this exhibition is. We'll plug it in every day, and we'll unplug it at the end of the night, and it's basically a group of artists that are looking at how you could use air as a tool to create large-scale sculpture. So it's, a lot of these items are kind of everyday mundane items, but when they're blown up and huge large-scale pieces, they have a different kind of connotation, and you maybe have to look at them in a different way, so, but it's also a lot of fun, there's a lot of whimsy in there, and I think the kids are really going to love this one. Then opening in April 21st is Kaleidoscope, the Delatory Brothers Retro Perspective. This exhibition was the opening exhibition at the Cheech Museum that opened in Riverside, California in June of last year. We were able to go out there, our curator and I were able to go out there, we met the Delatory Brothers, they grew up in Mexico, or they were born in Mexico, and then also lived in California, and they still do that, so they go back and forth, so they, they kind of, they studied glassblowing and sculpture, and so their artwork kind of looks at merging those two cultures, and it's all hand-blown glass and glass resin, and then there's little odd funny plastic toys in there, and candy wrappers, and, but these brothers have a real great sense of humor, they will be coming here, and Cheech will be coming back for this exhibition also. He's going to be the, one of the keynote speakers at the Texas Association of Museums Conference in San Antonio, so he'll be coming down here from there and kind of hyping up this exhibition as well. We've partnered with the Cheech Museum on this, and the Smithsonian National Museum of the American Latino, and so the three of us have created programming that will tour, but we're the second venue for this exhibition, and then from us it will go on, and eventually it will wind up at the Smithsonian. Along with that, we'll have In Our Own Words: Native Impressions. This is an exhibition, two artists went to North Dakota and met with several Indian tribes, and while they were making wood prints of them, they were also having conversations with them, so they're diptych, so on one side you'll have the image of the person, and then the other side is the conversation that they were having, so that's why it's In Our Own Words, but they kind of address a lot of issues that Native American tribes are dealing with, I think a lot of people are used to seeing kind of the Remington and the Russell version of the Native American, and this is more of a realistic, giving them a voice, and giving, letting them tell their own story instead of having it told for them. There's 26 woodcuts in this exhibition, and all of the pieces are printed on paper that was made from the pulp that came from the tribes that these people were from. That opens April 21st, too, so the In Our Own Words and the Delatory Brothers will open April 21st. And then the fall, opening October, or, yeah, sorry, October 5th, will be our Texas A&amp;M Art and Design Faculty Biennial. If you've never seen the work that's being produced by the faculty members on campus, I would urge you to come by and pay us a visit during that time, it's pretty amazing. Not only are they all excellent artists in their own right, but they're also teaching artists, and so they are kind of leading the next generation of artists that will live in our community, and so we really love to have that exhibition up, we do that biannually, and it's good for those students to come and see what their professors are doing too, and for our community to come and see that, what's happening at our university. We'll have that, not pictured on this screen, is we have an affiliate group called Collectors Club, and it's a group that purchases artwork for the museum's permanent collection, and in turn, we plan trips and activities for them to teach them how to kind of become art collectors. And so this exhibition, we will allow each of these members to submit something from their private collection, and we'll have that on display, so people can come and kind of learn what it means to be an art collector, what's the difference between a museum collection and a personal collection, basically a personal collection, you can buy anything you want, but museums, not so much. And then I included in here our 14th Annual Christmas Tree Force, it's really our most popular event, we just had our Family Day in December, and we had 2,500 people there for it. Everyone loves it, we partner with the Junior League and HEB on this, and areas, schools, pick a tree, pick a theme, and then they come in and they decorate it, and my favorite part of this whole thing is when the exhibition is over, we box up the trees, the decorations, everything, and it goes to the Garcia Center, and then families can come and pick up the tree, so the trees have a life after they leave us, so it's not, you know, because the trees are so great, and you don't want them to just go away, and people can vote on their favorite one, and then there's cash prizes for the top three. Education's at the core of everything we do, our exhibitions, our education programs, everything we do, it's our mission, first thing we say in our mission is to run an educational facility and a museum, so everything we do is education-based, but in particular, we have youth programs and adult programs, some of our youth programs are a spring break and a winter break camp, we do a fine art of summer camp, we have four family days a year where we plan programming for the community to come in. We just started, just this past year, we had our first year of AMS Teens, and that's a teen program, and so they came, met during the summer, and we had workshops for them with local artists and some traveling artists, and then they, we let them have their own exhibition in the museum, and they were thrilled. So it's kind of a way for them to see, to work with us, to find out if there's an art career possibility for them, and then to get some good honest critique on their work, and essentially, you know, what we're doing with all these youth programs is integrating the arts into their education, but we're also building that future, you know, art visitor for us in the future. And then some of our adult programs, we do docent training and tours, we do art teacher professional development, and then we always have Lunch and Mugs programs associated with the opening of our exhibitions, that's where we'll have a visiting artist come in and talk about their work. We extend our education to the Antonio E. Garcia Arts Education Center, we do an arts after-school program there, it's free of charge, the students can come there after school, they get tutoring, art education, drama, and mentoring, and then we also do a very important kid camp there in the summertime, and we just started doing adult ceramics classes there. You know, y'all were talking about marketing and how you need to do a better job at marketing, I hear all the time, some people will say, you know, you're the best kept secret in Corpus Christi, we don't want to be the best kept secret in Corpus Christi, we want everyone to know about us, so we're really making an effort to get out into the community and not just be insular and expect people to come to us, so you're always going to see us at Art Walk, we're always going to have a presence down there, we have our Community Days, we're free to the public, and then we just started this past year our Third Thursday Events. One of the areas that I really wanted to target was kind of the young professional group that, you know, they're working all day long, and on the weekends, they're going to go to the beach, or they're running errands, or they're doing something, but we want to get that group in there, we need that youth, we need those people, and so we started our Third Thursday Programs, every Third Thursday, we're open late, we have yoga, vendors, music, it's a lot of fun, we're averaging about 300 to 400 people each Thursday, each that we have this, so it's been very popular, so we're kind of building that future generation that will have an appreciation for what we're doing. We're also, we just celebrated the 50th anniversary of the Philip Johnson Building, and we really wanted to be intentional about the fact that this wasn't just a celebration for the people that could come, you know, that could afford to come to the Art Museum. So we wanted the entire community to be able to celebrate this, and so we sought funding for free admission, HEB stepped up, and we were able to offer free admission for eight months last year, and it made a huge difference, we track zip codes, and we love being a tourist destination, but we also want to be here to serve our public, and we saw a great rise in underserved areas that were coming to the Art Museum, so we know that if we take that cost barrier away, they're going to come, so it's a real goal for us in the future to at least have segments of our year that are free, and so that all the community can come. Yeah, so it's your building. And first of all, let me say, we love our new elevator, the refurbished elevator is pretty amazing, I will now ride in it, I was not getting in it before, it was the original 50-year-old elevator, so we're so happy about that. Our new windows, that project is starting next week, it's going to make a huge difference for us, because during hurricane season, we had the original 50-year-old windows, we still have them, I mean, you can go up to them and move them, and then the other windows that were installed 17 years ago are not high-impact, so when we have a threat of a storm out there, we have to be really careful, because what we house in our, in our building is pretty precious, so we're super excited about those two projects, but I will tell you, our HVAC system is really giving us a lot of trouble, you'll see on our budget that I gave you, we've spent a lot of money this year on our building, and a lot of that has been for HVAC repairs. Our chill tower sits outside, and the controls for our Johnson Building HVAC are sit on top of that building, so they're constantly exposed to the environment, to the salt air, so I mean, you know it's 16 years, that's the original chill tower, 16 years of sitting out in the sun, you know what our cars would do with that, and that's what's happening to our chill tower. And I will say to you, probably the most important, or the biggest challenge we face is climate control, because we have to give readings to every institution that's lending to us, they want to know our humidity levels, they want to know our, you know, what our temperature is in there, we have to have everything at a certain point, and we had two institutions, the Museum of Fine Arts Houston and Crystal Bridges declined to lend to us last year because of our readings. So I know that the windows are going to help, but if we have an issue where we're not able to control the inside temperature because we've lost power, then we're going to be in a lot of trouble. What we end up having to do, I mean, we've had some times where we've had allergies, and we end up having to de-install the artwork, put it into our vault, because we do have, the vault is on a generator, so it stays cool in there. But anyway, I would welcome a conversation to discuss how we can move forward. But anyway, I would welcome a conversation to discuss how we can move forward on that. And I'd like to end by saying, in my 10 years at the art museum, and I feel pretty safe saying in the 50 years we've been on the Bay, I don't think we've ever had a better working relationship with the city. We appreciate so much all that you guys do for us. We love installing artwork here at City Hall. We love the fact that you are supporting local art. We love the fact that you're supporting what we do. We consider the Art Museum of South Texas to be an economic engine for Corpus Christi. We drive cultural tourism. If you want to attract new business, you got to let those businesses know that you have culture in your community. If you want to define your community, you have to define the fact that what is your local culture? And so we're a part of defining what is that local culture. And then we're also a large, large part of quality of life here. You know, we want people to have things to do. We want them to be able to better themselves. There's a lot of statistics that show when you can insert our education for youth, you're going to have lower dropout rates. There's skills that just are not being taught, that we're trying to supplement, that aren't being taught in schools, that are going to help a lot of cognitive skills. So we really do feel like we're important here. We feel like we're benefiting your city, and we feel like you guys realize that. So we thank you for your support. We thank you for supporting the Art Museum of South Texas, and we thank you for supporting arts in Corpus Christi.
Sarah, thank you.
Thank you.
And we absolutely do support what you are doing and what your team is doing at the art museum. I remember when you were appointed, or I don't know what the correct term is, appointed.
It was right before 2020.
Yeah, I remember.
Great time.
So Sarah, was your, there is, I just want to, for clarity, there is not a generator? Is that correct?
There's a generator in our vault.
Only?
Mm-hmm.
Not for the building?
No.
I see.
No. And we also, so we have a chill tower for the Lagaretta Edition, which was completed in 2007. And then with the Johnson Building, we are connected to the American Bank Center through their chill water. So we have two different systems. So luckily, we don't typically have them both down at the same time. Usually one building, but it's a problem.
Right, Sarah, thank you. So one of the things we did four years ago, one of the first things we did, was have a facility assessment done of the art center that had been done, and there was a lot of issues. So we had that done to assess what's the most critical, and what do we do first, second, third. So we have that now as a working guide, and now it comes down to a funding issue. So as Sarah said, we got the elevator, the windows, but there's a whole list, there's a whole study. It's just like the American Bank Center that through decades of not investing, it's the price tags upwards of 30 to 40 million for things like new roofs, new chiller systems. So in the case of this facility, there's several that are connected to the convention center's circulated chilling system that's over there. I think the Asian Museum, there's a few other buildings that are all connected to this system. And so part of fixing it at the American Bank Center, we're looking at how does it, do we keep these facilities on that loop system, or do we isolate them and put a brand-new system? That's in the works, and when we bring that study to council and some of these initial projects for investment, that question will be answered.
Okay.
Right. And then the other one, the independent building or the separate standalone one, is no doubt. I mean, it probably needs to be replaced. And so it comes down to funding and resources. That's why in the budget process, we'll be talking with the council about prioritization and resources, financial resources.
Right, okay. Okay, Sarah, and thank you for, I think, bringing back, correct, the, I'm not sure, I guess you can clarify that, the day that it's free, the free day at the museum? Or did it go away and came back?
So, yeah, so we always have frost-free Fridays. So the first Friday of every month is free. And so, but that went away while we were free for eight months. So we'll have that back now. Yeah, so at least there's one, one day a month, but we really would like to do bigger segments of that, because we saw the populate, we saw our community using it. They were excited about it.
That is so impressive, and that is truly serving the entire community. And I know that you depend on partnerships for that, so.
Yeah.
I know, I remember very clearly when so many items over there were nowhere near the radar, and, you know, we started having these conversations. Councilman Pusley.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Sarah, thank you very much for the report. And Peter, just, I don't know if it was supposed to be, but the spreadsheet you had that showed the 2019 numbers forward, we didn't get that in our packet. For some reason, it came over.
You know what? It was a late addition. I actually have printouts. Would you all like one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I tell you what, let staff get that for us later. It's no big deal.
We'll pass it out to you, Councilman. Damon, can you get, yeah, great, thank you.
So obviously, we have some challenges with the mechanical and other things at that building. And if you're depending on chill water, you say, from the American Bank Center, that can't be going very well, because one of their chillers has been down for two, three years, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's not going well.
Yeah, so.
And, yeah.
That's one of our, those two top priorities at the American Bank Center, the roof, which is leaking and needs to be replaced, and then that chiller system. Because on the arena side, there's two that should be operating, and there's only been one operating for years, and that's a problem. So if that one goes down, good luck.
Yeah, I attended a, a close friend of ours, their daughter had her wedding reception there at the art center, and the room that we were in, it.
Were you hot?
It got so hot that the cake started to melt. Anyway, I'm being a little facetious, but it got warm. So, yeah, we, and do we, obviously, we don't have any money set aside for doing any of this, right?
Well, so for the chiller system, we've looked at all the available funding we have for the American Bank Center, and there should be money to address some portion of the roof and then the chiller system. Those are the two things we're focused on. The engineering analysis is near complete, so we have to figure it out. We may even look at borrowing money, using some of the resources to pay back debt, because the roof alone is in excess of, I think, 20 million, they were saying.
So the roof on this building needs to be replaced as well, or not?
I don't recall from the facility assessment.
No, I think, I think our roof is okay. I mean, we have, we had some leaks that you guys helped us with, so I think, I think our roof is okay.
I remember some pictures we received of water coming up to the back of this building and coming through the glass doors or windows.
That was probably from the hurricane.
Yeah, it was from Hannah, yes.
Yeah. Okay, and in the vein of marketing that we've all been talking about here today, I've never understood why we don't have the art museum name on the front of this building. It looks like they put us, it went away.
Yeah, can you go back, Sarah, to the?
Yeah. It looks like they put a space for the name and just never put the name on it.
Oh, I went too far.
There it is, right there, in the bottom picture.
Yeah, the bottom.
So there is a, there is a small concrete structure in front of the building that says Art Museum of South Texas, and I assure you, it's because we're an art museum, and we're supposed to be aesthetically.
Art-y, art-y, yeah.
Right. But on the side of the building and vinyl, it does say Art Museum. It's large. So it's on one side, and we also have the Texas A&M logo, and we don't have the city logo on there.
Well, I just always have thought that this is one of the places that we just don't do a very good job of marketing. You know, when I attended that reception event, I didn't know y'all even did things like that there.
We do.
And so, anyway, I just think for all of our facilities like this, we need to do a better job, and better job of signage or whatever we do. And I realize that whoever designed this building probably didn't want a name on it, so that's okay, but we need to bring attention to it.
Well, I do think.
And I always get confused about when somebody invites me to the.
Art Center and Art Museum, right.
I can't figure out where I'm supposed to go, so.
And it would be great to have better wayfinding signage down there, too.
Yeah, well, work, so we do have a way finding signage project underway. And Councilman Pusley and Sarah, too, and Mr. Morgan, we, I've said the same thing to like our Parks Department, where we have numerous ball fields that are leased out. Our name's nowhere to be found. There's a beautiful one on, down there by Ennis Jocelyn. The city logo is nowhere to be found. So with our new marketing manager, we can look at not only our city facilities, but ones that people, people run for us and start getting more signage out there.
Okay.
So good, yeah.
Well, thank you again for the information.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Campos.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
So good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Well, thanks to Mayor Ojeda, I was able to serve on the arts and culture for about two months before I jumped into this race. But I guess the main thing that I think that we need to emphasize is just how much the art community does bring into the city. And like everything else, you know, I know that we have neglected it, but it also needs to become a priority. It is a quality of life issue. I know you, it's, you know, nobody wants to talk about the water gardens, but the water gardens is, you know, so connected to the art museum, and I wanted to know, when people do go visit you, do they mention the water gardens?
They want to know when we're going to turn the water gardens on. If they will, if there was a switch for it, I would go do it right now. So I think people assume that the water gardens are part of the art museum, and so, but yes, people are asking when that will be back on.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, I don't know if you noticed, the young people that were here earlier, the young climate activists. And I just thought that maybe we could incorporate more of a, maybe a climate change, social justice, art endeavors, just to educate, you know, the public of how important it is to, to be a good steward, you know, to be a good steward of our land, of our indigenous background. I'm grateful that you're, you've got an art exhibit that's coming up soon. But again, me personally, I would like to see more indigenous programs, because after all, we are at least 64%, you know, Mexican-American.
Absolutely.
Basically indigenous, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
You know, we try and, we try, when we're looking at our exhibition schedule, and we typically plan our exhibitions three years in advance, so it's a little bit of a guessing game. But we do try to kind of have a mix of, like, say, the Dela Torre Brothers, which is coming to us from the Cheech. Let me tell you, we won't have more people in the museum all year, other than the night we have Cheech there. I mean, he is the darling of this community, and people will show up for him, whether it's for the art, whatever, we don't care, they're in the building, and, you know, while they're there, they'll have some exposure. But, but we also know that we have a community that, you know, we have a community that some portions of struggle economically and that aren't, don't have a higher education and don't have the capacity to travel beyond Corpus Christi. And so we also find it really important that we're bringing art here, that they're not going to have the opportunity to see anywhere, you know. If they don't see it here, they're not going to see it. So when we bring in shows like Warhol, Stella, and Johns, you know, we're also doing something to really make sure that our community's seeing important historical art.
Well, just to mention, I just got back from San Antonio and to watch the, or attend the La Malinche exhibit. And while I was there, you should have seen how many students were going through the art museum. And I'm just wondering, whatever happened to that? Is there still a collaboration with the school, with our school system?
Yeah, we still partner with CCISD. Every second grader in CCISD comes to the art museum on a field trip. And then we also partner with 17 middle school and high schools. It's our outreach program, and we actually have an outreach coordinator that goes to the schools, meets with them, talks to them about work in our permanent collection, talks to them about the exhibitions that they're going to see when they come. And then they come for a trip to the art museum and a tour. And then we have an art reach program where we actually take the art to rural areas, and we work with the teachers there so they can learn how to kind of fold art curriculum into what they're teaching.
Okay. I just think, is there anything more that we can do to involve the youth besides what you've mentioned? Would you like, is there anything else that we can do? Because I was, like, again, I was just noticing that most of the ones that were there at the museum were high school students, and it was just refreshing to be able to see the high school students at the museum. I know when I was growing up, that was probably the only way that I got to, you know, visit a museum, is if the school, you know, sponsored something so that we could go.
And we hear that a lot. We get a lot of comments of, you know, I remember coming here on a school trip. You know, I think for CCISD, I think the, their biggest issue is transportation. So, you know, it's just affording the buses to get the kids there. So I think they, you know, we've kind of worked out that agreement that it's second graders and then the art 1 and 2 students that are coming.
I wonder if RTA is listening.
Yeah. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. And Peter, this is more a question for you. I was looking at our capital budget, which I carry with me. There's nothing planned for the next three years, nor is there anything in the long-range plan for the art museum. And even the health, the Museum of Science and History, there's nothing beyond this year. So if this assessment, facilities assessment has been done, why isn't it in our capital improvement plan?
Yeah, there's been three that have been done. That's a good question, Councilman. We'll have to address that by adding those projects in, at least the future. Part of the issue is we don't have a staff group yet totally dedicated to these main assets that the city owns. And it's about, it's another one of those scenarios, and when there's nobody around, there's nothing, you know, stuff doesn't get done. So we're working on that. Right now, I have Elsie Borgstad, who's Assistant Aviation Director. I've put her on assignment to manage at least the convention center. So part of her duties will include analyzing these other facilities, starting at the art museum, as well as the baseball stadium, because they need to, at least, as you mentioned, that's what we have the capital budget for. It's a planning tool, and we have the information, it's just a matter of getting it in there. So we need a sponsor, I need a staff member. So Elsie's going to help do that. We just talked yesterday, in fact, with her, and I talked with another staff member, about we need probably one or two full-time positions to manage the facilities, there's nobody.
Okay. So we have kind of a, there's a scenario here, right?
Right.
Obviously, this, we see a gap, not only from the convention center, but the art museum, the museum of history, and then the.
And the center, the art center.
Feature that throws up water in the air.
Water garden.
The water garden.
So I knew that would, never mind, I know. Well, what I'm saying is that there's a lot of projects that need to be done that there's not, there's not a lot of money for.
Right.
So there's, there's options, and this is probably something you need to present to us as a complete package. Can't be done individually.
Right.
Because it is all going to, I mean, because really, all of it is tied into the C-Wall, where the type A funding is, is available to us, but I know type A is running out here pretty soon.
Right.
Right? So I don't know, what do we have available to us to do this? Obviously, they have needs, convention center has needs, Museum of Science and History has needs, plus we're talking about spending, you know, upwards of $8 million for a water feature. So I want to make sure that we look at the priorities of what needs to be done. Is it better to spend that money on the museum, or is it better to spend it on the water feature? Is it better to spend it at the convention center? Or is it, you know, we've got to prioritize how we're going to look at that, because I think we should, that should determine how we spend that money. And, but we don't know. I mean, it's not in our capital plan. I mean, and there's only one item in here for, for the convention center, and it talks about several different items. It talks about the HVAC, it talks, which also affects them.
Well, the convention center and that one, the study was just completed here the last couple of months, so that's why it's not in there. We knew that going into that budget development.
Okay, so I think this is probably something that you really need, and.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I don't think Elsie's the only person that can do this, who's our facilities director.
Charles Mendoza, well, he's, yeah.
I, you know, I think you need to put a little bit more priority on this.
We agree, yeah.
Considering how high visibility this is.
Right, I agree.
And how it affects more people. And how it affects more people.
Yes, sir.
Well, more so than, you know, I harp on it all the time about preventive maintenance and assets like lifecycle management.
Right.
And these, we've spent a lot of money on these facilities, you know, in the past, and you know, this is a capital asset for us, and we need to take care of it.
Agreed.
So, but we need to understand what that dollar amount is.
Right.
And what we should prioritize, and what we should spend. It shouldn't be done piecemeal, it should be, you know, we should get the entire list for the entire area, and we should make the decision from there.
Okay, we have it, Councilman, so we'll get it packaged up, just as you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
They answered most of my questions earlier. Okay.
Okay.
I do have one question, though. A long time ago, when I was on a field trip to the art museum, y'all told us about the bronze and the copper roof. And that it was all going to be green by a certain date. It seems like that date's already here. I thought, when I was in school, you told, y'all told us we were going to have a big celebration when it's all green. Did we have that?
It was green one day, and then we had the big celebration, we didn't tell you about it, we forgot, but it was super fun.
I tell us.
We miss you.
Art museum, if I can remember that as a child.
It's pretty amazing. There's a whole generation of children running around in town, wondering when the roof's going to turn green. That was before my time, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was a 25-year period, but I did miss that party.
You did.
But, back to the economic engine of art.
Yes.
We have had, actually, a lot of success recently on the economic engine of art in Corpus Christi. Thank y'all very much for everything that y'all added, Mayor, your office, DMD, and the city secretary's office. Fantastic job with the murals and all that stuff. And we've seen what those little things can do. Now, we have a giant project come to the city, that brings in pretty much any top person you see on TV, or the movies, or songs, or other art formats. We need to have these places prepared. And nothing against this council, and Councilman Hernandez said it best at a previous council meeting, is we had the opportunity to change this before you were mayor, mayor, so don't worry about it, you're good. But we have the opportunity for huge money coming to our city. Huge money, that'll be directly affected or brought here by the arts. And able to prepare us for this, we need to have things like this.
Water gardens.
Water gardens, that are architecturally world-renowned designer did, and then an engineer puts up some two-bit thing 50 years ago, not following architectural designs, and puts it underground, where it's going to flood right next to a seawall.
Right. It's brilliant.
Brilliant. For, and I need clarification, that was the engineer.
Correct.
Thank you. So the art of the architecture portion of it did great.
It's fabulous, yes. In my opinion.
Is there any way we could get that turned on for three days? Is it impossible?
It's impossible, Councilman. Yeah, the pumps, there's no pumps anymore.
Because back to Sylvia's comment earlier, when the World Cup goes to a city, what does the city do? They spend a tremendous amount of infrastructure, not just on that city, but neighboring cities, et cetera. So we have something similar to our own little Texas-sized World Cup coming to Corpus. Am I allowed to discuss this? And we want to be presentable to them, because then they'll come back. And we have a very, very naturally domestically-driven, and well, and internationally-driven art museum right here. And not a school that we have to pay to go, this is ours.
Right. Well, I mean, I was telling the mayor earlier, maybe last week, I've been asked to submit last year, the art museum was listed in the top 100 iconic design institutions in Texas. Or just, not institutions, but just iconic design. So it could have been artist, it could have been, you know, an object, anything. So I was asked to contribute this year, and top of my list would have been the water garden. I'm not going to submit it if it's not on. I mean, that would be an embarrassment. So, so that's a missed opportunity.
It is.
It is, but I will say, I'm going to, no, I'm going to turn this around, because here's the thing, it has not been on, and we can't change that, it is in design now. We have made a conscious decision, and I'm not saying this towards you, I'm just saying because there's a lot of negativity that surrounds the topic of the water gardens. And we need to turn that around, because what is happening is, it is going to get repaired, and it's going to repair, it's going to be repaired and improved to a degree, which is what we've been doing with many things across the city, repaired and improved.
Right.
So that for the future, for the next 50 years, we're going to have a water garden that people are going to, they're going to forget about how many years, you know, that it didn't get done.
Right.
And so, I know that, I wish that you could have told me.
Next year.
Right, next year.
Next year.
But we're happy to say that it is in design, and, you know, Peter can't be here for the next 50 years, I'm certainly not going to be here for the next 50 years. But we are changing the culture. Peter leads that charge. In changing the culture, councilmen do, that speak about maintenance and making certain that what we do is, there is a lasting effort.
Absolutely.
And this water garden is going to be just that. It is going to continue to be an icon in this city. I mean, I'm just very excited about it. But that still doesn't allow you to, we missed that, we did miss that opportunity.
That's all right, there's next year.
Right.
Well, just, I mean, you know, I just said, we just celebrated the 50th anniversary of the Philip Johnson Design Building, so you look at something that was designed in 19, opened in October of 1972, and it's still, I think, as fabulous as it was 50 years ago, and I think it will be in 50 more years. And so, again, I think with the support from the city that you guys have to take care of important structures that you have, it really is, it does mean a lot to us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, and that was all I had, Mayor.
I'll get right to you, Valine.
And we can't have the mayor keep pulling us, you know, she's lifting this up, she's setting the bar too high, you know.
I like that high bar. I like that high bar.
Well, I know we've come a long way since we sat down, thank you, Councilman, with that building.
Absolutely.
Because it was not, no one had paid any attention to, it was crazy.
No, not at all.
I remember, this is where it started. But anyway, let me move on for the sake of time. Councilman Klein.
Thanks, I just needed to get some clarification, there was some comments, I think, between you and Peter a little bit ago, about the effects of Hannah and some flooding, or threatened flooding, I guess.
So Hurricane Hannah, we had the storm surge, and so, we had water penetration in the building on our lower level, that's in the original Johnson building that we've been talking about, and that, that building sits on the barge dock. And so, the lower level is where we have our children's classes. When that building was, when the original building was built, we were not meant to be a collecting institution, and then the first thing that the architect did was give us a gift of artwork. So all of a sudden, we had artwork that we had to take care of, and we always kept that on that bottom level, which is why we eventually built this, the second structure was to add art storage, that was above sea level. So yes, there was water penetration there. I think with the, we're putting in new doors, part of that window project that we're talking about involves new doors down there at that barge dock, that will supposedly not allow that penetration to happen.
That's good, I guess, I would expect that we're unfortunately going to see that much more frequently as we move forward into the 21st century.
Absolutely. And our location doesn't bode well for that. I mean, we sit directly on the bay.
But besides the doors, the improved doors, do you have other contingency plans for if, or when that should happen again? Ways to be, try to prevent that, I guess, other than the doors themselves?
Really, for us, I mean, we can secure the building, but unless maybe there's a structure that you're building onto the seawall, I don't know how to make, keep the water from coming in there. I mean, we have a plan of action when that happens, so when we see storms out there, we immediately start taking everything off that lower level. Anything that's of importance down there, we have on rolling carts, and so we just roll it up to the third floor. So we have courses of action to protect what's inside the building, but as far as being able to stop the water from coming onto the barge dock, I don't know how we do that.
We've been really fortunate, in Corpus Christi, we've gone, I guess, a little more than half a century since the direct, last direct hit from a hurricane. And, and, well, I mean, so, you know, I'm trained as a historian, one of the first things I did when I got here, because I came here having helped evacuees from New Orleans, when I was over in Atlanta, I checked the history of hurricanes here in Corpus Christi, and up until 1970, from 1835, I think, or thereabouts, until 1970, there'd never been more than about 20 years between a direct hit from a hurricane. And so, the last 50 years, you know, can be viewed in a variety of different ways, as a blessing, or, you know, you could say that we are overdue as well. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add to Sarah's comments, too, Councilman Klein, we, Sarah mentioned the new working relationship, so in the past, the city organization didn't really embrace their organization. So we do now, so any storm event post-Hannah, we, that's one of our check-in points. Sarah, do you need, what do you need from us? Sandbags, help moving things? So their organization is part of our protocol, getting ready for a storm event.
First time I got that text, I thought it was a joke.
I know. Well, I was going to say, that's where it all started. With sandbags, it was the...
Do you need sandbags? And I was like, oh my gosh, really? Are you kidding me? And then y'all delivered the sandbags to us. And so, I mean, that's, that's never happened before.
Yeah.
It's huge, that's huge.
New partnerships. Councilwoman Compost.
I just needed clarification. Did you say that we do have a plan for the water gardens as to?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Yeah, we have a plan, I was, I had my light on here, but, so the water garden, just for background context for those new council members, in case we weren't following it, we put the water garden out for bid several times, and city council, the past city council approved what we call a design-build contract with local construction company Fulton. So it's a design-build, meaning the same company designs the fix, and then builds it, or does the fix. So there was some preliminary design work, about 30% of how we could restore the water garden, that was handed over to Fulton as part of this design-build contract. By March, the design will be 90% complete, and the city will have a guaranteed maximum price on which to invest. Right now, early indications are that the money that was approved in the budget won't be sufficient, meaning we're going to need some more. And we'll know that when we get, we'll know what the amount is more that would be needed to rehab it, as we get closer to the March timeframe. So, for this council, this is an important policy issue coming up, which is, do we restore the water garden or not? And so that decision, and that information, we brought to city council in March, in a few months from now. And then, if council, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, if council does approve the construction part of the design-build contract, then work will begin shortly thereafter. But it is going to be in excess of a year, I think, is what they're telling us, to get it restored, because it's a substantial rebuild, especially of all the electrical, mechanical, lighting systems. You know, the concrete and the metal flutes, all that's in good shape, but basically, all the internal material has to be replaced. The pump system, you heard Councilman Hunter talk about, it's below ground, it was. The new design, though, the 30% design, and what Fulton's doing now, brings it above ground, and it places it in dry land near the American Bank Center. So, big policy question coming up in March for the city council on that project.
Well, I know where we can get the money. Should I say it? Increase the water rates for our large users, industrial users? I'm just saying, let me throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Roy.
First of all, I know we've kept you quite a bit for this briefing, and I thank you for your patience.
I'm loving this, this is great, I'm so glad to be here on a slow day and have time to talk to you guys.
But I want you to know, I was the prior council member that was really big on the water gardens, and now that I'm back on council, one of the things I said I would do, if we don't fix this water garden problem, is I would chain myself to it.
Oh, good.
I'm joking, but, so I hope I don't have to do that.
I'll be there with you, I'll be there with you.
It is important, and I think it's also important, and I don't know what the return on the investment's going to be, but I think that was at one point in time, the number one photograph location. And when you get people over there, it's like myself, I didn't really know, because there is no sign, and I know that that's really artistic to not have a sign. Maybe we could do it in Braille? But, but I just think that having something that would attract you over to that area, and then having your building there, and I know that there's plans in the future to even do other things in that area, is just a great thing. I mean, I think the arts is important, the quality of life that we need here. I spent some time in Pittsburgh, living there, and it's a, it's a big museum town, and I just look forward to it. I think you guys are doing great, and I know we kicked the can past councils in terms of maintenance, but we've got the maintenance police here now, and we're going to make sure that we get on top of that.
It's a new day. It's a new day, yes. Thank you.
It is, thank you. Councilman Suckley.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to it coming back in March, Peter, if possible, if staff could give us, or work with Sarah and give us kind of a complete historical perspective of when it was built, why it was built, the cost, who built it, that sort of thing, so we all understand kind of, again, touching on whatever it said, kind of looking at, making sure that return on investment that we're going to be looking at in March is really what we want to do and what was intended in the first place.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, Councilman.
Thank you.
I think some of, all of that exists, but Peter, why not go through, and I thought maybe y'all did this in the new council orientation, the major projects need to be, they need to be said, like the history of them and where we are, a real briefing on the major projects that are coming forth. So like, had this not come up, you'd have seen it, you know, eventually, but, but they do, you know, you may feel like you need to sit down with someone, one of the four, or all of the four, I don't know, to go over this, but I think the major projects that we are working on, and I don't know, you know, how many of those there are, but you could make a decision on, hey, these are, see, these are some of the foreseeable important ones that they need to really be briefed on, so that you have that background, well before it comes forth.
One more thing that was brought up was the wayfinding, in order to try and make you more visible, is that seems like it's another one of those city projects that kind of goes on and takes way too long. I know, on Visit Corpus Christi, I think we talked about that two or three years ago, and so, I'd kind of like to know why it's taking so long, and if we can expedite that.
I think we sent a memo, Councilman, I'll get you a copy of it, just before the Thanksgiving, Christmas break. So the projects, there's numerous phases of it, but phase one is near complete, the recommendation of the wayfinding placement signage, and of course, it has to be constructed and built. In that case, we wanted to use a local company, there was two bidders, one was from Houston, there was none local in this city, but at least from Texas, there was one from Houston, one from like Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, or something like that. So we worked with the Houston company, they're a smaller group, not as maybe fast as a big company, but I felt it important that they be at least from Texas, that tells, you know, tells the city how to do wayfinding signage. So because they're a small, local firm, it does take a little bit longer than a big firm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and that's the trade-off with doing local sometimes, it does take a little longer. But nonetheless, they are working, we've met with their top leadership to talk about, you know, keeping it on track, and they're committed to getting the job done. So we'll get you a copy of that memo, that has the history, and then the timeline going forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Hunter.
Oh. Update, Mr. Suckley, Councilman Suckley, we've been, before they, our wonderful staff got here, we had a few different studies, and they followed through with the most recent one. Just, it's been a while, it has been a while, we said no to three of the wayfinding studies, and we started on host drop. We got up. So, just to update you on some of the wayfinding hazard that you've had.
Yeah, Brett Otting is, he's a team member on that, so I'm not sure if he's given updates to the, the Visit Corpus Christi board, but he's an active member of the committee.
Okay, so Sarah, thank you very much. Kimberly, thank you for being here today.
Yeah, thank you all, really, we, I really, just on behalf of the board and our staff, we really do thank you for...
we really do thank you for all you're doing. It's amazing, y'all are great.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah, thank you. Have a good afternoon. Okay, Peter, do you have anything else?
I believe that's the agenda, Mayor, for this meeting.
Okay, well, with there being no further business, I adjourn this meeting.